Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of the Merrimack School Board this Monday evening, December 21, 2015. Would you rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One announcement and order of business before we begin this evening's meeting, and that is that Board Member Davis Powell is out of state this evening, but we have an opportunity per RSA 91 hyphen A colon two, Roman numeral three, related to public meetings that allow us to patch him in by phone for this meeting. We have to just make sure that we can contemporaneously hear each other during the course of the meeting, and so I would ask, as we are speaking, in particular at this table, and as well for presenters, that we use the microphone and perhaps project a little more than we might normally, although we tested this in advance of the meeting and it seems to work fine from all locations. And I must ask Mr. Powell a few questions to clarify his status. The first is, Mr. Powell, the reason you are not in attendance this evening?
I am out of state visiting my family for the holidays.
And I assume everyone can hear him contemporaneously? Yes, okay, excellent. And your location?
Brandon, Florida.
Okay. And can you identify any persons who are in attendance with you at this moment?
There is no one here at this time.
Okay. All right, great. The other requirement that we have when communicating or conducting a meeting with someone via telephone is that all votes will be roll call votes as we proceed. So, excellent, thank you. Let us proceed. That takes us to item number two on the agenda, approval of the December 7, 2015 minutes. Motion made to accept by Mr. Schneider, seconded by Vice Chair Barnes. Mr. Powell, seeing as you are on the phone, I will ask if you have any corrections?
Just two. First off, I'd like it to be noted somehow that I was not present for the public hearing on the grants over $5,000, but I was present for the regular business meeting.
Okay. So noted.
And the second thing is on page eight, line number 358.
Yep.
Chris, you'll have to help me remember what exactly happened, but I don't, but I know I didn't volunteer to attend in your place since I am the liaison. I think you were just given a point of information, not necessarily that you needed someone to cover for you. Is that correct?
That's correct. I believe I asked you to reiterate the invitation for budget committee members to submit questions for department heads as part of the process.
Perfect.
In your liaison role.
Perfect. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other corrections? Mr. Schneider?
Well, I had none until I read that one. It's also not the Town Council Budget Committee meeting, I don't think.
That is correct.
It should be the-
School District-
School District Budget Committee meeting. I wondered when the Town Council picked up a budget committee, but-
Good point.
Apparently not, but other than that, I had no other.
Okay. Any other corrections? I had one. Page two, line 80. Student Representative Marcus received a standing ovation. Did we stand? I think we did stand.
We're standing.
Well deserved, standing ovation. And that was all that I had. So, if there are no further changes, we will put the minutes to a vote. All those in favor, yes, I will, a roll call vote, all those in favor of, not all those, I will call on you, and state your approval of the December 7, 2015 minutes. Ms. Gualume, how do you vote?
In favor.
Mr. Schneider, how do you vote?
In favor.
Vice Chair Barnes, how do you vote?
In favor.
Mr. Powell, how do you vote?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor, so the motion carries 5-0-0. And what is the student reps' opinion?
In favor.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're getting the hang of this. And that will take us to item number three on tonight's agenda, public participation. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we will close public participation and move to item number four, formal hearing on food service budget for 2016-2017. I will invite our Director of Food Service, Mr. Dave Zieke, to the table. Welcome, Mr. Zieke.
Thank you.
Make sure your microphone is on.
All set. Can you hear me okay?
Mr. Powell, can you hear Mr. Zieke?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Excellent.
Well, I thank you for having me present my budget tonight. This budget is for funds requested associated with operating the food services program for the six schools in the district for the 2016-2017 school year. One significant item that we have in the budget this year is purchase of replacement equipment, which would consist of two storage unit shelves at the Merrimack High School. These shelves are located in the refrigerated cooler at the high school, and the existing shelves were made of metal materials which have rusted over the years. The replacement shelves would be made of plastic with a lifetime warranty against corrosion and rust. And at this time, I'd also like to say that the lunch program is a member of the New Hampshire Buying Group. It's our third year in the Buying Group, and now the Buying Group consists of 48 school districts within New Hampshire, which gives us better bid pricing amongst grocery items. The only things that aren't included are bread, milk, and fresh produce. I had a couple of questions from Board Member Barnes, so as I go through these, I'll try to address those, and I'm not sure if everybody has them, or do you want me to read the question?
Everybody at the table has a copy of the questions.
And can I ask that you read the questions so the public will-
Sure.
-hear it, please?
Absolutely.
And then, for the record, it'll be great. Thank you.
Okay. For line item, food service equipment repairs, we had one question listed from Shannon Barnes, and the question reads, "Recently, we have upgraded a number of our warming servers to meet food service safety guidelines. Could you share with us all building equipment stands relative to these guidelines, and what, if any, equipment in the district that is not designed to meet these stringent guidelines? And be prepared to talk about maintenance and whether it is routine or a repair of aging The addition of the serving tables that we had in the three elementary schools and the replacement of the older equipment in the upper elementary were the main items that we needed to bring our service areas up to par. So, the high school and the middle school, both are fairly up to code on what we have there, so that's a good thing. As far as the costs associated with the repairs for equipment, some of it is preventative maintenance that we have done during the summer months when there is no school in session, and that might be, we have boilers in some of the steam units in the high school and middle school that need to be cleaned out, and he does preventive maintenance on the ovens, tests the oven temperatures. He does slicers, and he sharpens all the blades and stuff like that. So, those things would be something that we do every summer. If there's anything that needs to be repaired, he does it, so, but I have a pretty good idea that we're going to use that money every year. And then, the other stuff that we do have would be replacement of motors and equipment that are aging and they lost their function. One of the recent ones we had, we had to replace a compressor at the middle school for one of the reaching refrigerators, and an evaporator coil in the cooler, so those are the things that I anticipate would happen, but I can't really tell exactly when they're going to happen now. It's been, what, 10 years since the middle school? So, that's something that has aged and had to be replaced. Is there any questions or comments on that?
Mr. Schneider?
Just clarifying, because one of the things that she asked was about food safety guidelines. I'm assuming that you see NSF sort of labels on all those stuff.
Yes.
I'm assuming that everything that we use in the district meets that. It's just that when we replace them, we have to make sure they retain that-
Correct.
...sort of seal.
And Reed's Ferry, Thornton's Ferry, and Mastrola, we didn't have any steam tables in service, so those were new equipment purchases for those schools. And that's one thing that helps us meet those, the serving standards. We were fine with the way we were doing it, using the warming oven and then placing it in the counters, but this is, this, you know, retains the heat a lot better, and it does not, the people that serve don't have to keep moving back and forth and putting in the warmer, so.
Okay. Great.
And then, the second line on that first page, vehicle repairs. We had budgeted for a little bit of a sum of money, but we, the proposed budget is lower because we would use that money just for registration and oil changes for the new vehicle when we get it, so that's significantly less than it was last year. Page two, the laundry services. There was a question again as far as laundry services, so I'll read the question. Regarding laundry services of towels, has having our own equipment been explored, and are there any regulations on how laundering food service towels happen, and could I share? I have not explored that idea. If we did, we'd have to purchase equipment and have to maintain equipment, and of course, we'd have to hire somebody and have labor associated with the cleaning. And as far as regulations go, we use linen service to provide professional clean, safe towels in our kitchens, so I am insured that the quality in the towels that we do get are up to snuff. General linen services is OSHA and Joint Commission compliant, so they meet all the guidelines as far as any regulations that there may be as far as cleaning and servicing our towels, so.
Vice Chair Barnes?
To that end, the reason I was asking, and although it would require some investment, but when you're looking at the fact that just laundry alone is $5,400 a year budgeted, that, you know, when you think about, and that's why I said, is there anything specific, and, you know, what kind of load are we dealing with? Because, you know, when you're talking about, you know, even a large washer and dryer, you can do quite a bit for a couple thousand dollars. So, does it make sense to explore it? And if it doesn't, if there are guidelines that make it better operationally or even better safe, more even safety wise, that'd be good for us to know, because for $5,400, could it be something self-sustaining? Because, and even as a passive, you know, passive function of the position, because you'll be stocked where, you know, you have the stuff you need and you have the stuff you're washing, just like you would with the linen service. So, if there could be a way of doing that, you know, would it, would there be an opportunity to save for the district? So, that's where that one came in for me.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Mr. Schneider?
So, does that service include, I mean, do you rent the linens? I mean, do they-
They, we pay for the service of cleaning the linens. We don't own them. We don't, we just, if there's anything that becomes soiled and not usable, they take it out and replace.
So, it's, so you rent not only the cleaning, but also the material themselves, I mean, the pieces themselves?
Right, right.
So, it's like a lease? So, we don't, if we went on our own, so to speak, we then have to-
Purchase.
-go through and purchase them as well as the equipment to do and things like that?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
All right. And food service travel, that is for travel within the district, and it's pretty much level from last year, so I don't know if there's any questions on food service travel. Go to page three, as far as food service supplies. Again, we do have bid pricing from Central Paper with the Buying Group, so that has helped keep some of the, some of the costs for paper supplies and napkins and utensils and stuff like that down, so I don't anticipate that going up at all. And as well, same as food service, milk in food, again, I think it's going to be fairly level as far as what we have. I do have a little buffer in there, just in case there is any increase in produce. I know I just got alert that tomatoes prices are going up, and they could sustain for another month or so, and I just got an alert last week about lettuces and stuff like that because the crazy weather we have with El Nino and all the frozen produce in California, And then, on page four, vehicle gas and oil. Again, one question was raised on that, and I will read the question. Will the new lunch van operate more economically than the old one, and will potential savings on a day-to-day cost be achieved? The only thing I can say is, I know I get about only 15 miles to the gallon on the van that I have now. It's a V8 engine in that Ford that I have now. The new vehicle will have a 3.5-liter V6 engine, and it's an economy boost, so I could say that I anticipate, hopefully, that it might save a few bucks a day on gasoline, just for the fact that it's a smaller engine. But he said it would be the same, same amount of torque that we would get with the V8, so. And as far as page five on technology, the amount expended on that line is because we were still in the contract with the servers that we had purchased halfway through the year, so I anticipate that it will go up. When I go to pay for this year, we will be closer to the $12,000 range, and the contract, I think, ended in January 2015, so I have like a half a year on that one. And page six, with the replacement equipment. The item that we did focus on was the shelving units for the high school, and again, the equipment that we have in the, in the school refrigerator now have rusted over the years, and it would be imperative to get those replaced with something that would be able to hold its, hold its own for a lifetime warranty. And it would be probably less than $1,000. I put $1,000 in there, but I would have to go out to bid when I go and do that in July, so. Is there any questions about the shelving units?
I don't see any.
Okay. And the final, page seven, is food service improvement development, and that category is for costs associated with conferences and educational training for child nutrition. Generally, expended is lower than proposed and budgeted, but I always leave a little bit in there in case there's something that's on a national level that I need to travel to and be able to get, get there.
And you serve as the president of the State Association?
I am past president.
Past president.
Yeah, and I still, I still serve on the committee as Public Policy and Legislation Chair. And I do get to go to Washington. The School Nutrition Association does pay for that trip, and it's a well-worth trip to go down there and talk with the legislators and try to make sure we're in good shape.
Good. Excellent. So, are there any further questions related to the food service budget? Vice Chair Barnes?
The one thing I really forgot to ask overall is, with new expenses, and I really got into the whole aging of equipment, because you do have to invest in it, and it makes total sense that you do. That being said, you are a self-funded department, and the concern always is, how do we stabilize the school lunch program, knowing all the wild cards you have in operating your department? So, when we're looking at all these expenses, the van, of course, are necessary, what do you see happening with the school lunch cost to students based on all the, all the investments that you have to make, knowing you're self-funded?
Well, we do, we do have a balance that we do use for those instances, where we have to purchase any equipment or, like, the van, so to speak. I don't see that as any increase to the students' lunches directly, because we do carry that fund balance, which, you know, is there for an emergency, you know, purchase that we need something. The only thing that we do have is the, the part that the federal government makes sure we are equal to or at the same level as the free and reduced reimbursement rates. So, if that came up, we'd have to comply and have a increase to the school lunches, but we have been pretty stable for the last three years, so.
Right, and it's been something that we've enjoyed as well.
Yes.
So, for that reason, we're just seeing if that's something, at this point, you see us continuing to enjoy?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Gualume?
I have a couple of questions. One is, as it relates to food allergies, do you feel like you have everything you need as far as supplies and equipment to be able to, and I'm sure that's probably part of the OSHA and all of the other standards that the equipment has to be, but I just want to ask the question, do you feel like you have everything you need from a safety perspective as it relates to food allergies for children?
As far as food allergies, it's one of the hot buttons, and it's, we do try to provide everything we can as far as children with food allergies, if it's gluten-free or if it's dairy, dairy-free and things like that. I don't know if I have everything in place that I would need for a gluten-free kitchen, because that's very hard to do. We do have certain stations that we would use to, you know, produce or produce whatever it might be, vegetables and fruits and stuff like that, and keep it away. But that would be something that may be some interest to look into with future considerations. And we do have trainings available for allergies, and our cook at the parliamentary just went through one of those trainings. She's probably the best allergy person that we have right now, so it is an interest that I try to share with the other people to do as well, so.
And then, my other question is maybe just a little bit more long-term, and you were talking about the trip to Washington.
Yep.
And I guess I was curious if there's any trends that we might look towards in the future that might affect the budget or affect the district that, while you're here in front of us, we might want to know.
Trends as far as?
Anything with the, the cost of the lunches as far as what-
Well, some of the things that, that we're looking at now, and I know when they went through the reauthorization of 2010, they put a lot of regulations on us, and one of the things that we're hoping to is get a little more flexibility when, when we go back to Washington in the spring. One of the, one of the obstacles we have is trying to follow all the guidelines and make sure everything is 100% whole wheat. We have certain fruits and vegetables that we are required to try to put on the plates every day, so we're requesting the flexibility be there so that we have a little more leeway as far as what we can serve each, each day. That would help, you know, get, get more funds into our, into our lunch programs, and maybe bring participation back up a little bit, but I will look into that when I, when I go down as well.
Has the participation been declining, it sounds like?
It's been sta, stable, yeah.
Okay.
It's not going down. It's, the only time we really saw a decrease was when we had the price increase, and that's something that we've tried to, tried to avoid at all costs, is trying to keep the prices stable.
Okay. Thank you.
And that was what, about two years ago, maybe?
Three, I think, three, yeah.
Yeah, maybe three? Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Zieke on this budget? Thank you, Mr. Zieke.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Powell? I'm assuming you had no questions?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, thank you. That will take us to item number five, formal hearing on maintenance budget for 2016-2017. I will invite our Director of Maintenance, Mr. Tom Tussow, to the table. Welcome, Mr. Tussow.
Okay, I'd like to start off this year's budget by thanking everybody for the opportunity to discuss four major items that we have going forward in our budget. One of them is that the middle school, and it's replacement of the middle school roof. We've talked about that quite a bit, and I'm sure we'll have a, more of a conversation with that. Also, the other three items are at the high school. One is the track, the other one is the pavement around the high school, and the third is the HVAC unit that's on top of the cafeteria at the high school. Those are the major items that stick out in the budget that are items that have significant cost. What I'd like to do, if it'd be okay, is to go through the budget, line by line. We'll take a look at it, then we'll move on to the cut list and the questions. I'm certainly open to questions as we go along.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. On the first page, I would start off with, we're looking at water. How did I come up with the cost of what the water and sewer would be? I took the highest amount expended in the last three years, and out of that, I came up with what we use for the figures in that. Going on from that subject, I move down to the bottom of page two, which be the rubbish in disposal. That was level funded. From that item, we'll move to page three, which, on this one, is a, the maintenance item, which includes stuff like the roof maintenance, replacement of carpet, tile, painting, drapery, refinishing the gym floors, replacement furniture and parts needed, some additional whiteboards that we would be adding. That, that's part of a process. We've been doing that for a few years now, and this would be another piece of the pie in that. Also, there's a line at the very bottom of page three I'd like you to bring your attention to, and that's an update of fire equipment. And the fire alarm equipment, that would be the updating items such as pull stations being put closer to entrances, moving things around, just basic updates or code updates that we're bringing ourself in line. These are things where, when we walk through, as I walk through with the fire department each year, they have felt a need that they would like to see us bring ourself up to code and up, up to standards, and it's something, when I'm looking at it, I think it's very reasonable, something we should do and something we actually need to do for our safety, and that, that's why that line sits in there now. Okay? There's also other items as striping, plowing, the camera maintenance program, there's the chairs for Thornton's Ferry, the playground area. All those items is in that next section there. Is there anything in that section that you might look, look for, or do you need more?
Mr. Schneider? Mr. Schneider.
Yeah, just a question, in the chairs and caddies, you talk about replacing 300 chairs and nine additional caddies, is that replacing worn-out, broken, need-to-be-replaced sort of equipment there?
Thornton's Ferry right now has probably the oldest folding chairs and as we all know, as folding chairs get old and stuff, the rivets start well, wearing out, there's more of a chance for collapse and stuff, so it's kind of a safety need too, and that's why we're bringing that to the surface at this point.
Okay, thanks.
We'll move on.
Mr. Tussow, Vice Chair Barnes.
Can we just go back to the fire alarm updates? You have, you said one thing, I want to make sure I got it right, with the pull stations, moving them closer to entrances, are you moving them or adding new ones closer to entrances?
We'll be moving them. Some of them are moved, some of them are too high. The old thought was you don't, you put them up high so they don't get pulled. The new thought is you put them down a little lower so if somebody needs to pull them, they can. All little things like that, codes change, certain things. This item might be too close to a sprinkler head, the sprinkler head needs to be a little farther, all those little changes that happens with codes and stuff, it just makes sense more that you look at and every time there's unfortunately something that happens, they look at it and they come up with some, a little tweak.
Okay, thank you.
And just as it relates to code, is it, well, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that if you have a building that was built to code in a prior year and the codes change, you're generally grandfathered as it relates to the code, while it may be a good thing to, and the right thing, to update to code, are you under any requirement to do so? I'm not in any way suggesting we not do this, I just want to understand how code works.
Well, believe it or not, my thought was always that you are grandfathered. I've had a couple of conversations and I don't think they see it that way all the time. They look at it probably on more of an individual basis and some things that they understand, you can't do a massive update of a building, but there's some small items-
Every time the code changes.
That you can, correct. But there's some items that you can address that make sense.
Right.
And that's kind of where we are.
Okay, thank you.
On the next item I have down, it's grounds repair, it's on the bottom of page four. If you notice, the big difference here is last year, we added $15,000 in that budget for track repair because we were worried about the track needing some additional repair in its last year of service. At this point, we've probably spent $4,000 out of that, we're going to be spending the biggest chunk of that 15 probably in the spring, make sure we're up and running. But we have looked at that already, have done some additional repairs that we probably wouldn't have, but we're on task, as we say, we're right where we thought we would probably be. And so I do appreciate that extra money for that and that is keeping us up and running.
Thank you for the reminder.
The next item I would go is to the top of page five. The increase here is the Honeywell contract that is increased by contract, as you can see, that's what reflects in there. From there, I would go to page six if there's no questions.
I see none.
Then we go back to vehicles. And one of the questions I believe had to do with, do we expect less cost because we're having newer vehicles, we're updating our fleet? And for those particular vehicles, I absolutely expect the cost to be down, but there certainly still is a cost, meaning that we still have inspections, we still have new tires that we have to put on vehicles after a couple of years. We have oil changes and things like that. I'm anticipating, as we've done in the past, we've always over-spend that budget, it's just happened to us, so I'm hoping that it'd be much more aligned. And the other thing that I'm looking at with that budget besides enlining it a little bit more, that I'm hoping that we'll be eating our older plow trucks that we got now that are the 2008 plow trucks and stuff like that, they're going to be eating up a little more of that budget. So I think we're still right where we have to be to make things work for us. Moving on to page seven, again, at the very top, we have an increase due to a contract. Then we move from that, and then we move down to our repair budget, which is meat and potatoes where there's a lot of large items in there. And those are items that we spoke about before, roof replacement, CAF, HVAC, the track and paving. Is there anything in that that anybody would like to have a discussion about?
Four large projects. We have however discussed each of them at length, but are there questions? Mr. Schneider, your hand was up first.
So obviously, the four major ones, we've certainly talked about as part of the CIP and we've talked, for example, the paving, we made a decision at the board to sort of phase it in two phases. The HVAC, we understand, sort of that's the one thing we probably kicked down the road to this year, you know, based off of last year, so that's sort of, we need to do it. We have talked about the track. The one thing I want to bring up is the thing that sort of came to surprise most of us is around the roof of the middle school. Because, you know, if you look at the budget increase that occurred this year, in large part, our overall budget is flat except when you add these four items in and then that's, tends to be what puts it higher up. And the middle school roof has caught us by surprise, so the real question I have is, are there any options that we have as a district to make that roof last for another year? Now, you can't figure things out and you talked about it ripping in certain spots. Given the fact that we are in this budget situation, are there any opportunities for us to allow that to last longer or are we really at the point where we have no other choice than to replace it?
I would say that the unfortunate part that brought this forward was that we did our due diligence, meaning that I walked the roofs twice a year. When we're doing this long-term planning, which is very important to us, but also it does, it troubles me some ways because there are some moving targets and it's very difficult to do long-term planning. Again, the good part is I walk it twice a year, so if I walked it every five years, fortunately for this process right now, we wouldn't be seeing this, but we wouldn't be aware of the problems we have. So as, when we speak, myself in the greenhouse, we talk about when we know stuff and what we do about it. And once we aware of an issue, like the middle school, which kind of, well, not kind of, let's put it this way, it was like a hit over the head for all of us. Once we understand that it came, how do we deal with it? Well, what do we do? One, we roughly patched this year alone, 1,800 lineal feet of roof. That's a lot of patch. And that problem arise over a very short time. So we look at it and say, we had this huge problem and that is probably our number one overall concern at this point because that's a big, big ticket item. So the thought was, do we take the big bite out of that roof right now and try to eliminate some possibilities of great failure later on, or do we take the little bite? We looked at and said, we really can't take the bite of doing the whole thing at once because that number would be even another, almost $480,000 more than we have now. So we looked at it and thought, well, let's do it in two sections. Let's take the biggest section and try to eliminate the most risk this year and we're going to, you know, we are kind of like looking in, you know, you're looking in that crystal ball saying, geez, I hope it will last that. I don't know that. No one, I don't think anybody could know that because if we look over what happened this last year, out of nowhere, this appeared to us. So taking the big chunk now is the most conservative approach and then taking a little chunk and making, kind of saying, well, we're hoping that's going to last. You always have the other option of taking the little chunk now and say, I'm just going to see what happens, what happens, and then putting the bigger chunk at risk. So it was really the evaluation of when we split this roof, do we take the roof and do we take the biggest risk and try to eliminate that now, or do we take the bigger section of that roof and do we kind of see what happens? So I guess our thought was, at this stage, let's just take care of the bigger chunk and then we're going to see what happens with the smaller. And that's kind of why we, that's kind of why we did it that way. I'm not sure if that's the right way or wrong way. I think it's the more conservative way and it's the way it protects our assets the longest, but it's not easy.
So when we talked the last time, you talked about how the construction of that roof is so different than typically what we see with roofs because the way that was tearing and you sort of described it as like a, it was stretched across the roof or whatever, there were stress tears and things versus the other kinds of roof we do, does that make it more susceptible to catastrophic failure if we don't do anything?
Unfortunately, yes. That's the issue.
Don't sugarcoat, I mean, that's what I want to know, right?
That's a question to you, right. Yes, it does. We could have a more sudden failure at it.
So we could dump $30,000 in patching and then find that the underlying structure of the roof itself, nothing was done to it and it?
We could patch and then just right beside it could rip again.
Right, just because of the structure and?
It's more the structure, it's just the fabric of the rubber, the membrane, the membrane structure. What we do now is where we do a built-up roof, it's more in sections, there's a little more protection for us, certainly the warranty is a lot better. It's the roof that was put on there, a decision that was had to be made at the time. So when we look at it, we're really just trying to make the best decision and we're taking a look at the risks that we have out there. And there is just more risk if we push it on further.
Okay. So that's all I said on the roof, I want to talk about another part of it, but if somebody has a roof thing.
The roof?
No, 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 not the roof, but another thing.
Why don't we stay on the roof?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah, so Ms. Gualyumi.
So what it sounds like to me is the roof that we would potentially replace this with would be of higher quality and less likely to have the same impact like 10 years from now because otherwise you're looking at, you know, over $200,000 a year just to have a roof over on the building, that just doesn't.
I would say absolutely, we would put a better roof on there. We're looking at a roof with a 35-year warranty and I'm anticipating that we would be five years past that. So when we put on roofs, and that's what we've been doing, is putting on better quality roofs, even though our roofs have started off at one point with a 25-year warranty, those roofs have moved up to a 30-year warranty, there's a potential this one could have a 35-year warranty. Those are all great ways of protecting our assets long-term and really trying to eliminate this problem for future people, future members of the community.
Okay.
So we are definitely looking at putting a better roof on there. I would not be in support at all of putting on a same quality roof.
Okay, so it's not necessarily the structure of the building, but the type of roof that was put on at the time the middle school was built, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any other surprises we might see as it relates to other areas of the middle school where maybe similar decisions might have been made or back in the day?
You know, it's unknown, it's, I don't believe so at this point. I mean, we've seen a long time, we know the roof has been giving us issues, but it's, we've been repairing it. I really can't give you a great answer to that, but at this point, I'm okay with where we are.
All right, and then lastly, I'd like to thank you for being prudent and walking the roof and, you know, keeping an eye on all of those things and bringing it to our attention. Thank you.
Did you have a clarifying point to something?
Yes, I did.
Okay, go ahead.
Just to give you an indication, kind of a benchmark, the roof that we're, Tom is proposing right now is around four times the cost of the original price of the roof that went on the building. When that building was put up, there were a lot of areas that weren't script on as far as quality of materials, the construction, all the engineering work that went into preparing the site, compacting the site, making sure that the site was stable, the block, the cement that went into the building that was tested all the time, they'd take a piece, they'd let it cure, they'd break it, see where its stress points were. I'm not anticipating any other areas other than the roof because there was a budget for the roof of around $300,000 for the whole thing because the building came in at a cost of 17.8 something million dollars. And to throw another million dollars on top of that to get a roof of this type was not something that was reasonable in the minds of the board at the time.
So, but there was one other issue that happened at the middle school too, which was the sidewalks, right? Those gave out earlier than we expected as well?
Yeah, that's really kind of something that perplexes me. We've had our, the firm that actually did the work out there, and it's not the underlayment, it could be the salt, the concentration, but we have that at other buildings. It's one of these things where we did have the concrete tested, it met all the same specifications as everything else, but at certain points, the area is just eroding. So when that gets done, it's going to have to be redone in totality, I would say. So that's another area that just wasn't anticipated.
All right.
But it had nothing to do with budget or site work or quality of materials, it's just is and I can't really explain it, maybe.
But the roof did, the sidewalk did, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would say on what Matt says is sidewalks are another issue up there that we're going to have to address. And that's, if you really look at it, there's some spots at the high school, if you walk into the high school and look at the curbs, some of that, and when we get into the cut list, a little bit of it is, that price is in there. And it's to redo some of the sidewalks at the middle school and also address some needs around the high school also.
Okay, Vice Chair Barnes.
One more question on the roof and then I think we can move on, but I'm not sure, we'll see how it goes. The question was regarding the warranty, and I think of different warranties that we have on, say, our cars. And we have ones where you buy brake pads and the pads are covered for life, but every time you bring in your car, because the pads are down to the bare, you know, unit that you pay for labor. And then they have the kind where labor and materials are included, it's a comprehensive type of warranty. What would this 35-year warranty on the roof cover?
That would be a comprehensive type. There would no, no dollar limit, as they call, they said, no dollar limit on what they have to spend to keep the roof.
Bumper to bumper, all-inclusive labor, everything, right?
And I really took away what you said about if we tried to patch it, that it could tear at the patch lines. So, and that really is what got me thinking about that, so you kind of sparked the question. So if we say get a tear or a hole in the roof, what are they going to do to repair it? Are they going to do a whole section? Are they going to, I mean, how would it work to make sure we don't have the same concerns?
Are you saying on the current roof or the proposed new roof?
Obviously, the current roof is a dead horse at this point.
Yeah.
No, you're fine.
I would say there would be repaired. They're certainly not going to tear off a huge section, redo the section if it's one small area that needs to be done. So they would repair that area, but they would be responsible to repair that area to the length of warranty. So if they had an area and they had to repair it and it happened five years into the warranty, they know they still got another 25 years on it, so they would, obviously you hope and certainly for their sake, they would do it right the first time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schneider.
But the way, the type of roof and the materials are going to be different on the new one than it was in the original one, right?
Absolutely.
Right, so that, I'm hoping that the concept of tear, like we're seeing now, doesn't exist in the new roof. So, I mean, there are ways it can wear, but in a much different way, I would imagine.
Right.
Okay.
Ms. Gualyumi.
And then I, I think I know the answer to this question, but I have to ask anyways, there's no recourse under the warranty or anything for the middle school roof?
Past warranty.
Past the warranty by how much?
Well, it had a 10-year warranty.
It's built in 2004.
Four, so.
Oh, stop.
It's like the egg timer went off.
Just to ease your mind a little bit, we did kind of do a little due Just to ease your mind a little bit, we did kind of do a little due diligence on this. We contacted our insurance carrier just to see if there's any recourse with this, you know, with the way the roof split and whatnot, maybe something with our liability. We could look property insurance with the cold winters, with the harsh winters. It could have been one of those. But they concluded otherwise not into our favor.
Okay.
What they did offer us is maybe a little bit of insight in how it was perhaps installed because of the linear nature of the splits. It could have been, how wide are these sections, Tom?
I'd say 10 to 12 feet wide.
10 to 12 feet wide? So when they bring up a 10 to 12-foot wide section that's maybe 40, 50 feet long in a roll, and then they put it and they fold one end over the other, put glue down, lay that down. It could have been by leaving it with it folded, could have created these tiny little fractures that over time could have widened up because of the...
Like expand and contract kind of thing?
Yeah, expand and contract because I think the roof, the roof was done, let's see, '04 we opened the building, so it was done in the colder months to contain the elements of that building so they could work on the interior. So it wasn't nice, warm, hot and pliable up there when that roof was put on.
Well, that's what I was looking for. I wanted to make sure we did our due diligence if there was any recourse. Thank you.
Yep.
I would just add to what Ms. Gualyumi said. You said it's unfortunate that you walk the roofs twice a year. It's actually quite fortunate that you do. This is now my ninth budget that I'm reviewing, sixth as a board member and three years previously as a budget committee member. And the roofs are on the capital improvement plan. This wouldn't be the first time we've seen a roof, perhaps leapfrog other roofs in terms of priority. What you're doing is not an exact science. You're assessing the condition twice a year of each roof under the conditions that they are being met with and making an assessment and providing that to the board in terms of when roofs should get done. Additionally, we as a board have made decisions in the past to defer certain portions of projects or roofing projects, again, pushing them out into that capital improvement plan. And so while it's unfortunate that we find ourselves with a relatively large one, I think we need to also recognize that this one replaced another roofing project, right, which is now pushed out. And so I appreciate that what you're doing is giving us constantly your best assessment of where the roofs are and when we think we'll need to address them. But I think as a board, we need to also recognize that it can change and will change. So, thank you.
The next, are we ready to move on from roofs?
Yes, we are. Oh, Mr. Schneider.
I wanted, within this section, change topics.
Yes, that's what we're talking about.
Oh, okay.
Changing projects.
I just want him to move off of the section.
We're not going to skip the line item.
Okay.
There's three other big projects we'll talk about.
The only other one I wanted to ask about is the track. Now, I know that when we talked about the track, that you consulted with the company that does the repairs, that would replace it, and we've been through the four, six versus eight lane discussion. My only question is, have we ever gotten a second opinion on the ability to repair? Is there any other vendors or companies that do track build, track maintenance and stuff that might be able to look at our track and say, I've got this special way we can make your track last another couple of years, that'll super glue everything down or something, you know? Only because, you know, it's, we know we have to redo it, we want to do, I think as a board, we talk about doing it the right way for the future. But is there any option to keep what we've got today more stable, more secure? And could another vendor potentially come up with a different idea or is this the only game in town that we've got?
I would say it's not the only game in town. I would say we're speaking with a very reputable establishment, somebody who's been around. I think when John Snell came in and Eric talked about this, this is a company that is well-known and has good standards. Have we brought someone else in to take a look at it? The answer is no. I have not at this point. I'm comfortable with his decision because I understand what he's saying about it. When he talks about the underneath of it just delaminating and it fracturing and coming apart, I understand. I don't think another company, I don't know if I would trust another company that would say, hey, this is the way to fix it. Now, that's not saying when we go to have it done, we're not going to bring additional people to the table to say, give me other prices, but to look at it, I have not brought anybody in. And I have received from that company saying, we love your business, but we will no longer repair it. So if you decide to go out and have someone repair it, we will not be associated with it because we cannot put our company rep on the line for anything that would be substandard and unsafe. So I kind of respected that and I saw where they were coming from in the other projects and the other areas that they've dealt with has always been very professional.
So did I hear you correctly in that when it comes time, if we should go forward with the track, that there would be, we would allow multiple bids? It wouldn't just be automatically with this company that we would allow a bid process of at least more than one?
No, we would certainly look at a number, we want to make sure that all the people that would bid on it, bid it is certainly qualified and they would certainly, we would have a pool of people to bid from. I don't think we would put it out to one person and say, this is what we want, tell us whatever you want.
Right.
No, the process would be, this is what we need. We need some kind of design to it and it would go out to a, not an open bid, but a select bid of people that we felt qualified that could do this type of work.
Is it typically three or...
I would say that we'd be looking for at least three.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding the track? Okay. Would you like to move to the next project?
I would love to. That's, that would be paving?
Sure. Your choice.
Well, we can go to paving. Is there any questions on paving?
Mr. Schneider.
So one of the things I noticed was when the planning and building committee looked at our capital plan, they talked about how when we do paving products that we need to look at things like sidewalks and other things like that at the same time. And you talked a little bit before about sidewalks at the high school and middle school. Are we, if we decided, you know, if we do the paving on the front and the rear, sort of the loop in the back and the front of the high school, but don't address the sidewalks, is there any disadvantage to that methodology? Is it better for us? Is there anything architectural or construction-wise that would support that we do them both together?
I would say at this point, both those structures are in, meaning the road around is in, the sidewalks that we have in that area is in. So doing separately isn't going to be an issue. If you're talking about the other section that we spoke about was fleeting from the high school down to O'Gara, now that concept of the road had no sidewalks into that or there's no money. So if we are looking at doing that section and we have an interest in doing sidewalks in that area, I would think that we would look at it all together at that point. And at this point, I have not.
Okay. My other question is, I noticed that in the, after the time we first talked about the CIP and then between then and now, that a lot of patchwork was done to the place in front of the high school. I don't know if the town did it or we did it, but all I know is that after we first started talking, there was some patching that was done to some of the potholes that were there and some of the other larger gaps that were there. And I was just curious if that sort of methodology is holding up or is it really just, once we get through winter, we're going to find that more things are going to open up and it's going to behoove us just to do it all at the same time?
Fortunately for us, that was the town that did it for us. And they come through and they patch the roads and that's kind of what they've been doing now for as long as I've been in Miramac. So will that help us? Absolutely. Is it the answer? No. I still think that they're not addressing the large underlying issues, but it does patch little holes and things like that. So it's beneficial, but it's not the answer.
Anything else on paving? The loop? Okay. I guess we're going to talk about the HVAC.
HVAC at the high school. This is an item that we pushed off a little bit down the road. I can, I'm almost, well, I'm just going to tell you the little story. I don't want to really tell you, but here we go. Over the summertime, I get a call and says, oh, Tom, you gotta get over here. The roof is leaking like a son of a gun and we're just putting on the roof. I'm panicked, of course. So I get up and believe it or not, the roof was fine, but the unit itself is rusted out on the inside's unbelievably bad. So we opened up the doors and there's like a little pool in there. What's the pool formed from? Because it's supposed to come out of the drain holes. So I go up there and I have one of my mechanics come up with me and we bring a screwdriver and a bucket. And we start cleaning out the drain holes because there's a pool of water inside the unit. Well, it's all the rust from the inside of the unit just fell down and plugged the drain holes. I got a quarter of a bucket, a five-gallon bucket of rust out of there. That's what the inside of that unit looks like. So again, this isn't probably something you want to know, but this is something that you need to know. That, A, we're not doing it just because, or I'm not saying we can push it on, but it's reality. Once we get up there, cleaned out those drain holes, got about like a quarter of a five-gallon bucket of rust out of it, it flowed better, the water stopped flowing inside, I was a little happier. So we're at the point that that needs to be done.
Remind me of the age? Roughly 40 years old?
Right, the 77 edition, 78.
Mr. Schneider.
This is, Cindy just said something that was great because this is one of the things we did kick the can down the road. Her comment before you even said anything was the can's getting rusty. Well, apparently, everything's getting rusty. So I think it's like...
A gallon and a quarter worth of rust. Any other, yes, Ms. Gualyumi?
I was just saying, we've been talking about this since I've been in town, I think, you know? It's almost at nauseam now. It's just time.
Agreed. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, let's move on.
Okay. We move to page eight. It's the telephone, postage, printing, travel. Those are all, the telephone and postage is three-year average. The printing and travel is level funded. Moving on from that, page nine, office supply, level funded. Building supply, that's level funded. Moving on from that, page 10, maintenance and ground supply, level funded. Equipment, level funded. Moving on from there. And here's an area that I'd like to spend just a couple of minutes talking about just because this is our big transition year where we went from our gas conversion that happened over at the high school, Mastecola complex, the maintenance building. And when we were doing that, we were trying to figure out a way to come up with our current budget. And we were dealing with factors like P was propane, then we have natural gas in there, we have oil in there. And what we looked at for a theory, and we talked about this last year, is how do we come up with a number? Well, what we did is we took the two schools that we have or that we had had on natural gas, and that was the middle school in Thornton's Ferry. What we did is we took, and how scientific it is, but we took the money that we spent on those and came up with a square footage price and applied that to each school. So we knew it was some kind of, we were kind of picking a spot, but we were thinking that we were pretty close on numbers. The only other really big concern we had was the Mastecola Elementary because we were not exactly sure what areas are supplied from that boiler system. And what has happened, as we thought it might, the Smith Gym and the library, Adam Muse, comes and is heated out of the Mastecola ME boiler. So that would skew us quite a bit when we're looking at the ME per square number. So what we do have, one of our biggest advantages now, is we actually have what we expended. And that's what we went on. What did we actually expend in the 2014, 2015 year? And that's how we built this section of the budget. So we took that number and we added 5% to that, meaning because we figured that the cost, and how we came up with the cost is, we talked to different utilities and they come up with, well, like electricity is based off of their natural gas. And what do they anticipate? 5%. So we added 5% to what we knew was our expenditure. And that's how we came up with this section. So as, I know looking at it, it seems a little skewed and things, but now we're starting to get a clearer picture. Do I think we're going to have a clear picture next year? It'd be clearer because we'll go on a two-year average. The following year, we'll go on a three-year average and we'll get better and better at that. So it's a little skewed, but it's not perfect. Thank you.
I think part of the issue with trying to ballpark this was, you had in 1415, you really didn't have a full years of experience because the natural gas project started over the summertime and all the lines were put in. Then you had to have all the burners and whatnot replaced to accept the natural gas. And then you have to have all the internals and the meters. So we really weren't fully on NG on any of these buildings till November. So we don't have a full years of experience in 1415 either. So we tried to kind of play the commodities market on some of these and it really didn't work to our advantage. However, when you, I just went through and I looked at all the utilities, water and sewer, gas, oil, electric. And when I cum those up, we're budgeting around $20,000 less this year than we have in 1516. So when you look at them in total, there is a decrease. But the natural gas prices and the way we did the calculations and the muse with Smith Gym being part of MES and how it was configured, we gave it our best stab, but it was based on a lot of loose information as far as doing the budget for 1516 and hopefully 1617 is a little more accurate than what you saw.
And the square footage approach seemed reasonable. I'm curious in terms of, you know, recognizing that part of muse was run off of MES, but in terms of the two buildings, was the calculation roughly correct? Because ultimately, it's the same square footage, right?
I think it was closer.
Closer.
Then it looked, then it looks at ME alone.
Right.
Because if you look at ME alone, it doesn't look close at all.
Right. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Tuso at this point? Mr. Schneider.
So overall, I mean, if you look at the big picture with natural gas, are we seeing any indications that we're going to save to the extent that we thought we would in the conversion? Because there was this concept that we would save money over the long haul because of reduced cost of natural gas versus oil. Are we seeing any evidence overall that that's going to be true?
I would say that natural gas, I believe, is still cheaper right now than oil, but oil is at record lows, I would think. There are a couple of other ways of looking at it, but answer your question first, long-term, I think we're okay with that decision. Shorter term, when we look shorter term, I look at, we're getting, we got brand-new burners at our buildings. These were very much at the end of their life. These were very much at the end of their life. So, updating that section alone was certainly worth it for us because we're having a more efficient system. Also, we avoided some regulations as far as double wall tank issues because we don't have to have a tank. So, there was some avoidance and some costs that we saved, probably fifty-five thousand or so, or maybe a little bit more than that with that alone. So, there was that section of the, plus, long term, I think that it will work out beneficial to us. But the payback will certainly will be a little bit long, not a little. It definitely will be longer because we certainly was figuring higher prices.
Any other questions? No? Comment?
Yeah. I just, because I went back upon the, and took a look at the original analysis done in July of 2013. And the payback was based on, at the time, oil being at almost four dollars a gallon, which we know now is not the case, and natural gas at being around a dollar a therm. Right now, NG is, we've locked in our price for till 2017 at around the dollar or therm level. However, we're gonna try and renegotiate that because the prices have gone down. But we all know oil is pretty much cut in half from that three dollars and eighty cents a gallon that we were anticipating it being. So, we were looking at a simple payback of the projects of around four years. And now, if the prices currently hold up, we're looking at probably around seven years instead of eight. So, the payback is still there. And as Tom mentioned, you had the benefit of getting the funds to attack some problems that were severely gonna cost us a lot of money and help offset the cost of those, like replacement of the tanks. You know, that's an EPA thing. That was mandated by the feds that we get rid of those and put in double wall tanks and everything like that if we would've stayed with oil. So, depending upon, with the current situation right now, with oil staying as it is for the next three or four years, then the payback would be in the seven-year range as opposed to four. But who knows what oil's gonna do in the next three years? You know, it could shoot up to five bucks a gallon. All of a sudden, I could say the payback is finished next year, you know, if you don't know. But regardless, it was a good decision at the time. It's still a good decision. You know, because whenever you talk to anybody, what would you rather heat your house with? Oil or natural gas? Everybody says natural gas. It's more stable as far as cost goes.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none.
I'd like to move to page twelve. And a short answer how we came up with the electrical. What we did is we took the highest expenses of the last two years and then we added five percent to that. And that's how we came up. We took our two years, highest one, added five percent. And that's how we came up with that. Moving to the next page, which would be page thirteen. We come down to the oil section. We took the highest expenses in the last three years. And right now, that doesn't seem like it's a great idea because of the way oil prices went. But that's at the point, we figured we'd take the most expensive one that we had. And most of these were used year fourteen, fifteen, or twelve, thirteen, and that's how we came up with the price.
Have we, similar to natural gas, have we locked in an oil price?
You can't do that, unfortunately. You can lock in price for a year, like at the beginning of the heating season for sixteen, seventeen, we'll be able to do something. But for electricity, for the distribut, not, we can't lock in for the distribution because that's covered by the Public Utilities Commission. And before PSNH sold off to Eversource, they got the house and sent it to pass a rate increase on the distribution charges.
Yeah, I wasn't asking about the electric. I was asking about the oil.
Yeah, the electricity we can, the NG we can, but the oil, no. It's whenever you start your heating season, you can lock in for the year.
Okay. And the budget will have been set at that point. So, having a conservative number for not knowing what oil prices will do is, you know, while you say it may not make a lot of sense, perhaps it does, to take the highest of the last three years, just in case.
Again, on page fourteen now, maintenance, gas. And that's something that we took the highest two years, the highest amount in the last two years, and we used that as the figure we went with. Moving on to page fifteen.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, wow. Mr. Powell, you almost gave Vice Chair Barnes a heart attack. It was quite loud when you came in. Yes, Mr. Powell.
I apologize.
No worries.
I was wondering if I could ask a question of Mr. Chevanelle.
Sure.
Are we still pulling our resources with the town as far as purchasing fuel for the vehicles?
Yeah, we buy at the town pump. So, they get their price, it's delivered by the state. And we have little key fobs that we use. So, yes, that's correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Now, moving on to page fifteen at this point. We're gonna talk about maintenance and equipment, the eleven thousand dollars, the last page. And I'd like to expand on this a little bit. I don't know if we've ever talked in a little bit in detail about this. But what this does is it lets, gives us money to repair all the equipment that we actually use day-to-day equipment. And that could be, let me give you a short list of some of the equipment we have. We have floor machines. What we do is we wash, some people call them like a Zamboni effect for hallways and stuff. We have approximately ten of those. Burnishes that we burnish hallways with, we have ten of those. We have equipment like high speeds, burnishes that we do classrooms, small areas with. We have low speeds where we do some deep scrubbing of that. We also have some items called super suckers, which when we're scrubbing floors, we suck up the waste and stuff like that. We have roughly eighteen of them. We have many two-wheelers. We have six carpet extracts. And all these items have to be maintained and replaced. And one of our biggest sections of this that I don't think a lot of people are aware of is that the burnishes and the floor machines all run off of batteries. The batteries are a very expensive item for us. Battery life is about three years. We use them every day. Battery life is three years. We can get some piece of equipment. The cost might be four hundred and fifty dollars to replace batteries in them. Some of them are eight hundred and fifty dollars to replace batteries. That all comes out of this line item. Plus, replacing like wheels on two-wheelers or also the machinery besides batteries, parts go. Regulators, speed control dials and all that. And that's basically, if I'm looking at, there's over, I'd say, over two hundred and fifteen pieces of equipment that we own, we maintain, and that all comes out of this one-line item. One of the great benefits that we have in this item would be maybe triple, if not more, if we didn't do all in-house service. We have one of our mechanics that does nothing. His major focus is repairing and keeping our equipment in good running order. So, that's a great benefit and that's a great cost savings to us, not having to take every item that goes down and send it out for service. So, I'm, I feel grateful that we have somebody on our staff that's capable of doing that. And that's a big plus for us.
Wonderful. Any questions for Mr. Tuso, Vice Chair Barnes?
Well, when I was asking the question, I wasn't even looking at your Zambonis, which are very cool, by the way. I'd like to borrow them. But that being said, I was looking at the list on page six when I was formulating that question. And when I looked at some things like the MF-20 tractor, which gets, you know, two hundred hours a year, and the MF-230 tractor, which gets two forty hours a year. They're from nineteen seventy-six, nineteen seventy-nine respectively. We just talked about a little, you know, lovely little rusty heat wheel. And, you know, when you look at that, you know, there's, what's the life expectancy? You know, because it sounds like it's lived a long time.
Well, I kinda hate to bring this up at budget time, but we're gonna go here anyways. The tractor is something I looked in because it's, like you said, it's really, really old, old. To replace that tractor, the twenty now, to get something that has enough power, scooping power into what we want. When I looked into it, it's somewhere around fifty-five thousand dollars with a really good state discount. So, then we made this decision, do we do that? Or do we go and look for a new tractor? Or do we replace the clutch, which was gone in the tractor that we had? And our decision for three thousand, thirty-five hundred bucks was, let's repair the one we have. We don't use it every single day, but it's one of those pieces of tools. When you need it, you need the right tool for the right job. And there's no other tool that can do that job. But do we do it all the time? No. So, at the point that I am at and looking at the budget we have, that's something that we fixed and we moved on. But yes, someday it's gonna come back, but hopefully, the twenty won't come back for five years. I'm hoping. Okay.
Good. Any other questions?
That brings us to the end of the budget, I believe.
Yep.
And if you would, I'd like to move on to the cut list because that's another question that I had.
Yep.
Now, when we look at the cut list, and we're looking up and down, and these are normally items that I spoke in great detail between myself, the superintendent, Matt. And we all sit around and it's a difficult decision sometimes, what is priority, what's not priority? When we look at the first two items on the cut list, the countertop and cabinets at the high school. That is part of doing an upgrade, in an upgrade that is well-needed for the home ec program at the high school. Is it a thing that I would say that it's not gonna work? Or it's, they're not gonna be able to hold that class if we don't do it this year? No. It can still function, but it functions, it's a little more tattered. They're not in great shape. But the long, the, looking down the road was, that's an area that still hasn't been abated. We should do that area and try to tie it into SIP. And if we look at the SIP, next year is an abatement coming up at the high school. So, we were looking, at least my thought, and I believe the superintendent's thought with Matt, was to roll it all together. That is the perfect time. That's why it made this cut list this year and why we thought it would be a good place to hold off until next year. They requested it, does it need to be done? Absolutely does. If you're looking here, you're saying, this is really tied. But it's functions and we're comfortable saying, with this budget in front of us, we can wait. So, that would address the first two.
Go ahead, Ms. Gualyumi.
Oh, that covers the first two, the cabinets and the cabinet. Okay, thanks.
Moving on from there, we would look at the AC at the high school, room one-twenty. That room had an AC through the years. It started off that the AC in that unit was originally for printing, when printing was in that area. It stopped working. It probably hasn't been working for the last five years. The high school brought it up that they would like it repaired. We looked at it and said, yes, there are quite a few computers in this room. It might need it, but with the way the rest of the budget was built at this time, that's why that made the cut list because it wasn't as high as we thought as all the other needs of the district. Again, that kinda...
Before you go on, Vice Chair Barnes and Mr. Schneider have questions.
You red-flagged me with the computers, honestly, with that. Are you thinking the same thing as your HP? Yeah. Is this an exterior wall room or is this an interior wall room? Could there be like a portable unit put in there or?
I suppose they could. But our findings with portable units are normally, if you're looking at a unit for a commercial box store, they're inadequate. They don't even do what I would say a classroom adequately. They're better than nothing. But if you look at one-twenty, that's a huge room. That's a big room. That's almost what I would call a double room. Would two or three units do it? I don't really believe it would give them long-term relief. Would it be better than nothing? It might be. Do I think that it would solve or make them feel that we've accomplished anything by giving them? Probably not. I don't think it's a good fit for that area.
Because it's a thirty thousand dollar line item. And obviously, when you're looking at, I mean, they're not gonna be spectacular, but the highest, you know, BTU air conditioner that you can get, that would be a unit type, window unit type thing, you know, a single unit type thing. Or even, and I'm not really sure what kind of AC unit this would be. Would it be one of those, and I've seen commercials that even have them for home, where it just mounts on the wall fence out to the outside world?
Correct.
Those are thirty thousand dollars apiece.
Well, thirty thousand would do that room, depending on the size of your room. I mean, that's a huge room, really good ceiling height. I mean, that's all factors.
So, about what we're sitting in?
Ah, probably a little bigger.
Okay. But, and I guess the question is also, are all the computers in one concentrated area or are they spread across the room?
There are some computers. I don't think it's, I would not say it's a computer lab. I would say, and I don't know if the computers are on or they use them continuously. They are part of the program. It's a photography room. So, I would take it that that's somewhat in their curriculum, but I'm not sure. I'm not probably the person to ask.
Okay.
Mr. Schneider.
My biggest question is, you said that they, it stopped working. How long is, was it like five years they were working?
Five or six years, yes.
And all of a sudden, they're saying, now we need it. I mean, I guess the question is usually you have a room that needs air conditioning for equipment. When it stops working, usually you sort of address it then rather than let it sit for multiple years and then come and revisit it at that point. So, I'm a little curious on the timeline.
I would think it's been asked for in the past, but I'm not sure of that.
I just remember, whenever I remember ACs, I remember like rooms that had sped in there where they had to have climate control for special education. I don't recall a room because it's getting hot because of equipment.
And I don't know, I think there used to be a whole different standards for computers because in the old days, computers put off a lot of heat depending on how small your area. It's kind of a large area. I'm not exactly sure. The request was made, we waited, and we decided not to do it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, let's keep going.
If you go on to one-sixteen, I know it says AC art room. That's a little, that's a little misleading, not on purpose. It was just a typo. It's actually for a ventilation system or, because they have pottery in there now. They're starting to do more pottery, so they're looking for some kind of ventilation system to remove some of the dust and out of there. And that was another thing that was asked for, I think, at the point when they asked for it, we asked for more information. And I think we're in a process now of getting more information about that, how critical it is and what's needed.
Mr. Schneider.
Just real quick, is there like a kiln in the room that needs to be vented out? Is there?
There is a kiln. It is being vented out.
It is today already? But they need, they're looking for additional ventilation for the room, maybe to make it more livable or something? Is that, you need more information, so whatever, okay. I was just imagining a kiln. I, I was just imagining a kiln sitting in the corner with no ventilation out, sort of like a little pot heater in the corner or something.
That will not happen. There is, they're absolutely, as a matter of fact, they just went through the process of bringing a new, getting, getting a new item in there.
We call that the MHS sauna.
Moving on from that, we go to the boys' locker room. This is something I, it's kind of a, that I know about, the HVAC unit in there is not removing, or it doesn't move enough air. We, we have issues with that when we are in seasons such as football season or seasons of odor. That's something it was, well, just...
With high school boys, isn't that year-round?
Yeah. This season. With that said, it, it was on the ask report, we have been looking into that. We have made some modifications in that area. So it, it's part of a process, meaning the first time, we made a modification, as far as bringing additional air in that unit, it used to bring in like 14%, we brought it up to 60-some-odd percent, because we can't bring in too much, because obviously, during the cool times, we could freeze the coil and stuff like that. So we made additional air coming in. We also lengthened the time. Those improvements have seemed to help. I would not say they're the answer. We've also looked at other areas of trying to do a little bit of keeping things cleaner, them working as hard as they can to making sure that things are washed and tidy in areas like that. But it seems to be, I'm looking at it as another area that we're going to have to come back and look at, and I, I see it coming back, honestly. Moving on from that. We'll move on to sidewalk repair. Sidewalk repair that everybody has seen at the middle school. It's probably looked at this list and said, there's quite a bit of damage done, also in some areas of the high school. A few of those areas, we've, have done some repair there in the past. Most of the middle school, a lot of that, the middle school definitely needs to be repaired. It was just one of those things where what we had on our plate was as much as we thought we could take this year. And I'm not saying that it's not something that needs to be done, or not something we're walking away, but when we look at what we have, we took as much as we could.
Understood. Questions? Let's keep moving.
Additional, the additional cameras at the middle school, they are additional cameras, they're not replacing any cameras that are there. It's just really an enhancement of the camera system that we have. Like the high school, when we looked at it, we, we have cameras in every hallways. The middle school was thinking about, right now, they just have major focus areas of major hallways. They were thinking about doing a more inclusive program. So that's what kind of we were addressing, or looking to address with that. It's just to enhance the system that they have now, and the value that you could talk to schools about, and they would, I think they, they're pretty much unanimous that it certainly is a great tool to have. From there, I would go to the sink bases at ME. We have listed 10 rooms there, there's roughly 23 that need to be done. They would be the, the small sinks, they would be the fixture. They are quite old and not in the best shape. In need of repair would be a understatement. But again, it's all about cost and what we can do. So we decided that they would be also on the cut list, and we would come back to them.
Vice Chair Barnes.
On that, you're talking about 10 rooms with sink bases. How many sinks does $15,000 buy you?
Ten.
Ten.
Ten sinks, so $1,500 a sink.
$15,000 would do the 10 bases and the fixtures that come with it.
For 10 rooms?
10 rooms. And we roughly have 23. So I would anticipate, honestly, if I'm looking at that, that we would be doing a multi-year deal. So that would be one bite of the apple, maybe the 10 worse, when it starts up, or we propose it next year. And then we would see it repeatedly, maybe it'd come back another year for another bite of that, doing a section at a time. Obviously, when we get into it and we start pricing it out, maybe we can get a little better pricing. But at this point, that's kind of what we were given, so that's what we based it off of.
I think we're living in a Home Depot world, where we don't have $1,500 sinks that readily, so for us, it's kind of a sticker shock.
And one thing I do not want to put in is particle board and all the, you know, unfortunately, we can't.
No.
Because when we do stuff at the school level, we do it for, I can't come back in five years and say, you know, I need some new bases. We still think of the middle school as a new school. That school is
Over 10 years.
Old, 10 years old. It's not the middle school. So I certainly couldn't come back and say, my sink base needs to be redone in five years, so I have to put something of quality that will last, because unfortunately, there's other projects that's going to come up.
And so these things are basically those porcelain sinks that we're seeing in the JMU's when we go to vote, that are just mounted against the wall with the faucet? Are there counters in this whole?
No.
No, it's counters.
They're a counter with, with a sink base, metal base, faucet, bubbler.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, it certainly, I, I understand what you're saying. It's, it's not what you're thinking about when you go and you look and you say, oh, I could buy that for 150 bucks each. It just doesn't happen.
Not the same stuff, clearly?
Not the same stuff. We'll move on to that, calf tables, something we talked about before in the past. I think we've, we replaced them at Reed's and then also at Thornton's Ferry. Mascol Elementary's turn was coming up, as we say, we don't say turn, meaning that everybody gets their turn, but they, they have the oldest tables in need of replacement. At this time, we felt that we were comfortable still to repair those, and they can last another year. Moving on from that, we would go to the windows. We talked a little bit about this during the summertime, windows and replacements. That's an item that will have to be thought about a little more at a later date. We are working at, working on making sure that we keep them secure at this point. Moving from there, we can move to outside bleachers. We really started looking at bleachers in, in total, when we had the high school issue. And we went through and started looking at bleachers. Those bleachers themselves are functioning the way they designed. They certainly are safe to how they were put in. Do they have safety rails? Do they have walkways? No. Are they code compliant? No, they're not. That's why we feel they need to be upgraded. Again, compared from what we have on our plate already, we said, yes, they are something that we need to address, we're not going to walk away from it. But at this time, we felt that it would be money spent, better spent at another place. That goes on to the paving. We discussed a little bit about paving. That was a board decision to split. I think everybody understands the difficult choices that you had to make on that. And it comes down to the last item, grounds. And that's always one that I can always raise the flag and say, you know, this, this impacts us on cutting it, impacts us sometimes in taking care of people. Do we make it work? Yes, we will. Is it something that will ever go away? No. I, I think this asking for grounds people will be there until it passes. It may not pass for another 10 or 15 years, but I, I'm saying that it will be, it's still a need, and it's on the list of things that we have to eventually address. And that comes to conclusions. I hope I answered all the questions, and I'm more than willing to, anything I can help with.
Any other questions for Mr. Tusa? It was a very thorough walkthrough. I think you've satisfied all of our questions, before you scare any of us. Mr. Powell, do you have any questions?
No, I've been scared enough, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tusa.
Thank you.
Ms. Gualyumi.
It's, it's not a question for Mr. Tusa, but I just wanted to make sure that the budget is online and available for anybody in the public.
Yeah, if you go on the, if you go to our main page, and you go on the left-hand side, there's a column there that says budgets. You click that, you'll see 16, 17, and you'll see last year's too, then you'll see prior years. But it was available online on, by, on December 8th.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it was out there, and that anyone watching from home would know where they could reference it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gualyumi. That now takes us to item number six, smarter balanced assessment results, establishing a baseline and context for use. And I will turn the microphone over, as soon as he gets there, to Dr. Mark McLaughlin. And just so folks know, Mr. McLaughlin is presenting a presentation that each of the board members, including Mr. Powell, while you may not be able to see it, you have it in your packet and can follow along.
Great, thank you very much. So I'm happy to be with you tonight to begin our conversation about this new assessment. I'll start simply by saying to you that, because it's new, it's something that, you know, we're all continuing to gain familiarity with and comfort with. So I'm going to do my best to state, sort of establish a baseline, because, before we look at results, because I think it's important for the board, and also for the community, to understand a little bit about this tool, and so therefore, to understand the results, because it's a different, it's a different tool than we have had in the past. So I'm just going to, let's see. Try to move to the next slide. And I don't know why it is not moving forward. You know, in vaudeville, they used to say, never follow a child or a dog act. And so technology is one of those things to kind of, so what I'm going to do, while Matt's starting, I, I appreciate that, Matt, while Matt's helping. What I, what I first want to just say to the board is that there's a tendency, probably in the community, there's a tendency probably in the community to connect smarter balance with kneecap. They both kind of have a similar reporting system for levels and so on, which we'll talk about in a minute. But I think it's very important to have the community and the board understand that these are not the same things. And so the first slide that I'd like to show you, but the, more importantly, the first point that I'd like to make is that it's not kneecap. And the most important thing that I want you to understand is that while there are trends that look the same, they could be speaking to two very different things. So, for instance, we put together a slide that said, there's an import price of uranium in the United States, and if you look from 2000 to 2008, there's a certain trend line that goes up. And that corresponds with a trend line for total revenue generated by arcade games in the United States. Those look like they parallel each other. They have absolutely no relationship to each other at all, except if you look at results, you'd say, well, that trend is going this way, and this trend is going that way, but they're completely different things. And it's really important to say that, because kneecap, as an assessment tool, really assessed, assessed items in isolation, content in isolation. And the difference between that and smarter balance is that smarter balance really attempts to assess both, both skills, ability to perform tasks, and understandings, which is an entirely different thing, because it's combining content knowledge with an ability to do something with that knowledge and demonstrate it. So, so it is not kneecap, and there is no point of comparison there.
Can you find your PowerPoint back on here again? Because it was blocked though.
Okay.
I don't want to go.
All right, thank you, I apologize. I'm not sure if the board prefers me to just continue.
Would it be helpful for us to perhaps take a five-minute or 10-minute recess and allow you a chance to get the presentation going?
Looks like that might be helpful, yeah, sorry about that, I thought it was all queued up.
And so perhaps while you do that, if you want to turn off the microphones, we could also move forward in terms of the agenda and move to other topics. Why don't we do that, in order to keep, keep on schedule, as it were? So what we'll do is, we'll come back to item number six, smarter balanced assessment results. And what I'll do is move to item number seven, the request to construct a bridge on Greater Woods. And I will turn it over to Vice Chair Barnes, who brought this item forward.
Thank you. As you may know, I am a citizen-at-large member of the Greater Woods Subcommittee. That being said, I think that I got on this committee because of the interest of the district, and served on the Greater Woods Subcommittee as the school board liaison for its entire time, prior to it going on quote-unquote hiatus by the Conservation Commission. So when it was reestablished, there was no school board seat, and therefore, I am there. So, just to give you kind of a heads up on where we're at. So I do attend meetings very, very regularly. I think I've missed two altogether. But that being said, there's a lot of district interest that always comes up with this property. And, you know, it's always about, how are we using it for education? I know we talked about that with the, with the camp sergeant's presentation a couple of months ago. But also what students are doing outside of school. And that is that it is a path that students are using to come into the middle school, because the trails do lead right to the back door. And it's, I think, more efficient for students, it's more enjoyable for students, for them to cut through the Greater Woods trails to get to the middle school. That being said, there is an area that is being heavily used, it was actually, it's, it's a trail, but it's not a trail, but it's a trail. And that being said, there are students that created the trail by actual use. It has the same level of quality as any trail that was built for, for a designed purpose, because of its consistent tracking by foot. But on top of tracking by foot, there's been, I guess what you would call non-approved use, which is that ATVs are coming through, and that's one of the trails that's helping them to access middle school property, which we have seen ATV damage on. And they are coming onto the property, and we've always looked for every strategic opportunity to divert them away from district property. What I brought to the, to the board tonight, and added to the agenda, so thank you for turning around so quickly, is that there's the opportunity to improve the trail by building a bridge. And the bridge would not be ATV-friendly, but it would be footpath-friendly. And I think that's exactly what we want it to do. Some of the benefits will be, and it really is, the place where the bridge will be built is where the town line and the school line meet for, within Greater Woods, because that's our easement area that Conservation Commission is taking, overseeing for us. So it will not be usable for motorized vehicles, so it accomplishes that goal, diverting them away from district property. And they are currently using it, we're seeing damage on trails and running entire tracks where they are being used. Matt Chevannell, a few months ago, gave Matt Karen and I, Matt Karen is the chair of the Subcommittee, signs to put out on the property, which we did, that lead into the school district line. And it pretty much says, you know, no motorized vehicles are authorized to be on this trail, you know, per school district regulation. So leading into the property and onto the property, it's appropriately signed now. So that being said, there's an area, which you'll see, a picture was provided in your packet, where kids are walking down the trail, you can see the trail coming down on the top half of the picture, the waterway on the other side, and that's where they're continuing on to school. They're cutting through the water. So you will have kids that will not do well with that, and they will have wet shoes when they get to school. You will have, obviously, you should not be ATV-ing through water, you should not be walking through water. It's not good for the students, it's not good for the environment in which it's, it's being used. So the goal is to build a bridge. And it will do so much good for us and our students. And on top of that, it's a new trail that our cross-country team can use, because it has a, a safe, runnable path that would be encouraged by, by its terrain and by its safety. So the bridge, we are asking So the bridge, we are asking for money from the Logs to Lumber Fund to help fund that. The Logs to Lumber Fund, I will let Matt talk more about it as he has his microphone over there, but it's basically something that we have a fund, that's a rotating fund because of some logging work that was done probably about 10 years ago on the property. Maybe longer.
Yes. Essentially, what it was is we undertook a, this looks strange, let me have a seat.
Looks like you're going to propose a bridge, to a bridge.
What we did is we, we did a forest management plan for the entire district. It included Thornton's Ferry, it included the middle school property, it included the Timmins site on south way up Babusick Lake Road, South Babusick Lake Road. And there was around, I believe around $40,000 net coming from the proceeds of the sale of that lumber. And on the ballot at that particular time, we had a warrant article to capture that revenue and to put it in a revolving fund for the purpose of sustainable forest projects of both the forest and of the wildlife, too. So, this really falls right into that wheelhouse of sustainable forest jobs that we can do by keeping vehicles out of wetlands, by preserving what we currently have and being compliant. So, and the board's our agents to expend, so that's why it's here before you this evening in a formal fashion.
Right. And I guess another benefit, just to add, is that trail leads out to a wetland where there's a lot of great wildlife, turtles, beavers, all the good stuff that our students are looking to find when they're out there on the trails. So, that being said, I know that the goal is to review it tonight, get you familiar with the idea of the plan, the fund and its, our ability to expend it, and look on our January 7th agenda to actually see if we can approve the expenditure. The bridge will actually be built by the committee. And, oh, I'm sorry, the 20th?
January 4th.
January 4th? I put 7th? I did. So it's January 4th. And then we will have, based on the decision made on the 4th, it will be brought up at the next Greater Woods Subcommittee meeting in January to start planning, you know, based on how the funding is either approved or not.
Great. Thanks. Are there questions from the board? Mr. Marcus?
So, I may just be missing something, but looking at the picture of the creek, it seems to me that a bridge would be easier to traverse on a dirt bike or an ATV. So, is there something about the bridge that would make it more difficult? Because...
It's narrow. It doesn't, it doesn't support four wheels.
All right.
And actually, even on a dirt bike, those, the treads, the way they are, it's not, it's, you don't want to be on a motorized vehicle with a small trail and you're going to end up falling downward off of the bridge.
But it wouldn't stop them from getting off the bike and rolling it across the bridge, correct?
I've never met one person that would do that, but yeah, technically it wouldn't. But honestly, I don't see that being the way that they usually use the property based on historicals.
Yeah, there's also, when talking with Matt Karen, there's also going to be some natural abutments put in there.
True.
By the means of felled trees to discourage those, that motorized vehicle kind of action going on there.
So basically, just we take down trees and we purpose them to make it difficult for them to safely navigate.
Jersey areas on kind of natural.
Trees is a good addition. Thanks for saying that.
And that makes more sense to me because if ATVs are traversing this as is, putting a bridge there without any other sort of barricade or deterrent would simply have the ATVs going around the bridge. But by putting something on either side of the entrance to the bridge, you certainly accomplish that goal.
And currently, we're finding evidence of them going through the water, which is a violation, EPA violation. You can see a little bit of it if you look at the very bottom of the trail. See where it's kind of mucky down there? You can see where there's some rut. That's, that's where it's actually, we saw ATV.
Tracks.
Track. So they are using it for that, even though it's illegal. So whatever we can do to discourage that is encouraged.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Can I see that thing again?
I have a question for Mr. Chevanel.
It wasn't mine.
As I recall, and again, it was nine or 10 years ago that the fund was established, as I recall, it was closer to 75,000 or something in that range and that a portion of this was expended to help with the trail at Thornton's Ferry School that goes around the perimeter. Am I mistaken in that?
We never had $70,000 in that fund.
Okay. All right.
We've never generated that much income. The trail work that was done at Thornton's Ferry basically was offset by the work that was done in Thornton's Ferry as far as the forest work.
Okay.
So it was a net amount that we received from Thornton's Ferry, not the gross and then paid out.
I see.
The only other expenditure we've made from that fund over the years is to GPS the trails at the middle school.
Okay.
For around $3,000.
Okay. So the balance of the fund is roughly?
It's around $32,000, I would say. Thirty thousand.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Powell.
I have a couple of questions if I could.
Sure.
So, is this an official request from the, from the MCC or the Greater Woods Subcommittee that, that we expend this money?
They would, based on the discussions, yes. So that's why Matt Karen came with me to meet with Matt Chevanel, to discuss what the opportunities were, the rules around the funding, to see if it was a fit, and based on that, putting it on the agenda.
So are they going to be coming to us and making a formal request?
I am the member of the committee that was assigned to make the formal request because I am a member-at-large of the committee. The problem is, the town, the chair of the Subcommittee is a Conservation Committee member and he's actually in the Conservation Committee member as we speak, meeting as we speak. So for that reason, I took this action item on behalf of the committee.
Okay. So has the Conservation Committee identified the need for this and approved it? Because I'm, I'm looking through the stewardship plan and it says that the MCC needs to review and approve all new requests.
It's part of the stewardship of the trail maintenance. So, trail maintenance is one of our action items and the stewardship plan is actually being updated and that is part of our charge is to maintain usable trails and that is part of it.
I don't, I don't know if I'm getting, and I would appreciate feedback or input from other board members as well. I don't know if I'm getting too bogged down in the minutia, but shouldn't we have something, you know, if, if this is the formal request and everyone's fine with that, that's, that's good. But, I don't know, it just seems, it just seems kind of odd to me the way that it's coming about.
What's so odd, if I may ask, that we're, I'm asking, or that the chair's not, or...
No, that the, yeah, that the Conservation Committee itself, I am, I guess I'm, I guess I'm confused as to how you're asking, what role are you, are you in when you're asking this?
I am a member, as I prefaced in my presentation, I'm a member of this Greater Woods Subcommittee. And that's why I put it on the agenda, requesting and having Matt being my co-author because he could really represent the district interest in the history of the, of the fund and its purpose and function.
Okay. And then the other question I have for Matt is, what are the requirements or stipulations for expenditures? I know you said that the board, the school board are agents of it, but are there any specifications? And what I mean by that is what it can be spent for, what it can't be spent for?
Yeah, it has to be related to the sustainability of the forest and for the protection of wildlife. I believe that was the wording that was used in the, the original warrant article. So this is definitely for sustainability, to keep people out of the wetlands area. And our relationship with the Greater Woods Subcommittee is such that, you know, Shannon is a member of that, Matt Karen is the chair now.
He is.
And they're kind of a direct report to the Conservation Commission, who has kind of tasked them with the minutia of oversight of the Greater Woods Subcommittee of Greater Woods.
Correct. And Matt Karen serves as the vice chair of the Merrimack Conservation Commission as well.
Correct.
All right. I think, Matt, if we could get, I guess copies of the warrant whenever the, when it was done years back, that, you know, so that we specifically know what, what can and can't do just to be on the safe side, I think that would be great.
Yeah. That, that, that's a good request. And I understand your question about process, Mr. Powell. That said, whether this came from the Greater Woods Subcommittee or not, even as a district initiative, recognizing that this stream is on the border of our property and would benefit the students who are walking that trail on their way to work and would have additional uses, educational uses for the school and will further protect the natural resources there. Even as a district initiative, I see great value in the project. So I understand what you're asking. But that said, I also think there's tremendous opportunity to use money for the, from the Forest Management Fund for sustainability and in order to buy materials and to have the Greater Woods Subcommittee work on this project that has benefit not only to the district but also to all of the users of the property. So, I think it's a good process question. I guess my point is, is what, where it came from is, I think, also not important because I, I'm weighing it on the merits to the district alone and see value.
And that's perfect. And I appreciate that feedback because that's, that's what I was hoping to hear from, from any of the other board members. That's why I piped up when I didn't hear any other questions. So the only other thing that I, that I would ask for, as I said, is, is just a copy of that warrant so that we can make sure that we're on solid footing with that before we go forward.
Wonderful. Ms. Gualyumi?
I too think it's a very worthwhile, I think there's a lot of bang for the buck with $1,000 and not only to the school but the community and that, you know, the overall Merrimack community as well, to be able to access that property and appreciate the conservation land that it is. My question is for Matt, though. What is the balance in that Logs to Lumber Fund?
Right now, looking, looking back at it, it's around $30,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think you said that earlier. But yeah, I'm definitely supportive of, of this $1,000 expense for a bridge to, to do all of the things that were discussed.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider?
So, I'm also a little supportive of this. I think it's prudent, it's, it's sort of why the fund was signed, it's not a significant amount by any stretch. Based on Davis's request, is the intent still, is the intent that we discuss it at the meeting on the 4th or to put it on consent? And we just do some diligence on our own prior to that to make sure we're comfortable with approving the...
Yeah. So, Vice Chair Barnes had suggested that the item go on consent. What I would suggest is that the warrant be provided before our January 4th meeting. If upon reading that, like anything, we put on consent, anyone that has an issue with moving forward based on the information that they've received and wants to take it off consent for discussion, we can do that. But otherwise, we'll, we'll plan to put it on consent if all the board members agree. And thus far around the table, I've seen agreement. Mr. Powell, does that sound acceptable to you?
Oh, absolutely. I was going to suggest that before you did.
Okay. Wonderful. Great. Okay. If, is there any further discussion on the topic then? Okay. So we will put this item on consent and the board will receive copies of the Logs to Lumber warrant, as it was originally written. Wonderful. So that closes item number seven and we will return happily to a working item number six.
Yes. Thanks to Justin and Matt for helping. So I'm pleased, you know, because this slide right here wasn't that easy to do, so I kind of wanted you to see it. So it was just, it was just making the point about the folly and trying to connect kneecap and smarter balance. So I think that point's been made.
Are we correct, however, to assume that there is no correlation between the price of uranium and revenue generated in our...
That would be also a good assumption, yes. Yes, it would. So I hope that the board recalls that over the last, you know, couple of years, when our district has been getting ready for the, for the college and career-ready standards, that we've, we've talked a lot about what they, what they're intended to do and how our district has tried to get ready for them. And we have recognized, at least in Merrimack, that the difference between, let's say, smarter balance and kneecap that came before it is rigor. And we've tried to make the point over and over again that these standards and this assessment is asking students to do a layer more of things than they used to do. And again, it's demonstrating your critical thinking skills, it's demonstrating that you can write with a purpose, demonstrating that you can problem solve in ways that you didn't have to use to do before. So it allows educators to be able to make some, take some data in and then to begin to make some judgments about what I need to do in order to help students both understand the content and then demonstrate that in a purposeful way. So, there is, it's a challenge to discuss this because there's lots that I could tell you and it could, and we could get, you know, kind of bogged down in some, in some semantics and language. So what I have chosen to do is focus on two words, claims and targets, that are significant phenomena in the world of smarter balanced reporting that I think is important for the board and the community to understand. So, in the buildup to developing this assessment, questions were asked, how are we going to be able to know when students are college-ready? And the team of people who worked on this said, "Well, we'll understand it when they can use mathematical procedures and then communicate their reading." So it's, it's both skill and practice, demonstration, application. We've talked about that a lot. So, in that case, that was, so in math, the answer is that students would be able to demonstrate mathematical procedures and communicate their reasoning and that's how we know that they're college and career-ready. And in ELA, we know that they're college and career-ready when they can produce writing that's purposeful, that can reflect the range of purposes. So I'm going to write a little differently to grandma than I'm going to write to my friend and that's an important thing. We don't use the vernacular maybe when we're talking to our boss, but we do when we're talking to a friend. And that's both legitimate purposes of writing, but really trying to have students understand the differences of those purposes. And that they need to investigate and research. They need to be part of the equation when it comes to demonstrating their understanding, that they can't just cite something that they don't understand. And so there's skill sets attached to teaching that. So, questions designed to assess those understandings and those results are grouped. The, the results are based on items and tasks grouped by those understandings and those are called claims. So the first thing to understand, and this is what's reported to parents, are claims. And in ELA, there are four claims. And they are reading, writing, speaking and listening, and research. So, the organization around the smarter balanced assessment in ELA is four claims, reading, writing, speaking and listening, and research. The first claim, and I think just for the purposes of, I don't like to read PowerPoints, but I think for the purposes of the... but I think for the purposes of the community who might not be able to see it, I think it's important to say, the reading claim is students can read closely and analytically to comprehend a range of increasingly complex literary and informational texts. So, again, I just want to try to help to thread, or to continue the thread that we've been discussing for a long time. Reading closely and analytically is different from being able to read and say, what is the name of the person who wrote this and what was the main point? It's an entirely different set of skills and abilities. And fortunately in Merrimack, prior to smarter balance, we've been doing that kind of work, particularly in our elementary grades already. But in any event, now it's codified. The second claim for writing, students can produce effective and well-grounded writing for a range of purposes and audiences. For speaking and listening, students can employ effective listening and speaking skills for a range of purposes and audiences. And research, and this is important, students can engage in research and inquiry to investigate topics and to analyze, integrate, and present information. I hope the term inquiry has some resonance with the board because our August Academy was all around the motif of inquiry and having teachers and students to recognize the importance of that as a mindset so that they can do these things, that they can analyze, integrate, and present information. In math, there are also four claims, and those are concepts and procedures, problem-solving, communicating reasoning, and modeling and data analysis. So, I think you see that there's a requirement to both understand, to have math facts and math fluency, to be able to have a level of automaticity around math, and that not being sufficient anymore, it has to also connect to these claims, the ability to understand concepts and procedures, to be able to problem-solve and demonstrate that, to communicate the reasoning. This is very important, and Mr. Delude is in the audience, and I'm sure that he would agree, that a student's ability to communicate reasoning in math is as important as knowing an answer, because one can know an answer and not know how I got there, and that's limiting. That's the difference. So, just to briefly say, concepts and procedures, students can explain and apply mathematical concepts and interpret and carry out mathematical procedures with precision and fluency. We're glad to see precision and fluency because that's very important, and it's recognized here in the college and career-ready standards and in smarter balance. The problem-solving claim is defined this way. Students can solve a range of complex, well-posed problems in pure and applied mathematics, making productive use of knowledge and problem-solving strategies. In the third claim, communicating reasoning, students can clearly and precisely construct viable arguments to support their own reasoning and to critique the reasoning of others. And that's very important because we often say in our business that one knows something best when one can teach it and when one can challenge the reasoning of others so that that person is challenged to be able to explain, why was I thinking this way, and that a person listening to it can say, "Well, I don't know. It doesn't make sense to me." And in that very messy engagement, there's good learning. It's not neat and clean and worksheet driven, it's engagement. And that's a claim, one of the important claims. And then modeling and data analysis, students can analyze complex, real-world scenarios and can construct and use mathematical models to interpret and solve problems. So, I don't need to belabor it, but I just want the board and the community to understand that each subject area, ELA and literacy and math, are subject to claims. And those claims are among the things that are reported to parents on behalf of students. So, there you see just another way to look at the subject and the claims. Then, there was this idea that we want to be able to have a little bit more specificity as relates to the claims. And so, what would be done? And so, then there was a question about, well, why not just report a standard because we've now got new standards? So, how did the student do on this standard? A question. The reason for not doing that is because smarter balance is attempting to recognize that a fully-integrated brain doesn't just work on, I will answer you through standard 5.1. A fully-integrated brain answers combining multiple standards together. And so, the decision was to try to further define how would we report student work through something called targets. So, we can report on target areas within claims and call them targets. So, it works something like this. You have, for ELA Claim One, which is reading, Target One would be key detail. And here's just an example, I'm just trying to provide an example. So, again, you have a claim, reading, you have a target within that claim, which would be key detail, and there is the way that that's worded for grades three through five, given inference or conclusion, using explicit details and implicit information from the text to support the inference or conclusion provided. So, the claim is reading, but the more detail around that claim has to do with the Target One key detail. And if you see, if you look carefully, you'll see that it's talking about being able to support inference. So, I was an English teacher, and there was a day when I would ask somebody, "Well, why do you think that?" "Well, it just seems like that's how it is." Well, you know, there was a time when you'd say, "Well, you know, if that's what you think," and that builds your confidence and so on. But really, what you, a better thing to do would be to say, "Well, how is it that you conclude that?" Because you might be using evidence in a wrong way. And there is such a thing as a right and a wrong way to do things. And so, we would say, "Well, turn to page 15 and find the place where it supports that." And if a student can't do that, well, then maybe they need to rethink how they came up with that inference. Likewise, for reading, you have another target, central ideas, determine a theme or central idea from details in the text or provide a summary distinct from personal opinions or judgment. We notice particularly younger students are really able to say what they feel about something, and that's good because that's important. But how you feel about something is sometimes different from what the facts would point to. And we spend a lot of time with our students trying to talk about the facts. You just need to, whatever they tell you, but you've got to rely on those as well as what you personally believe, which may be in conflict with the fact. So, likewise in math, you have a first claim, concepts and procedures, and the first target would be use the four operations with whole numbers to solve problems, or know that there are numbers that are not rational and approximate, approximate them by rational numbers. So, the only point I'm trying to make to you is that it's, the reporting is many more levels than we used to see with kneecap. Parents are reported only by claims. Teachers get targets. So, teachers use the targets to inform their instruction. So, the targets are, if you see right here, you have the ELA Claim One for reading, you see the target, and then you see the multiple standards that are employed to support that target. So, you're asking students to combine multiple standards that are kind of coalesced around the target under the claim of reading so that the teacher can see a result and be able to pinpoint more, with more accuracy than we used to, what is it that the student is successful in and what is it that the student needs additional supports in, and be able to link that to what we've been doing in Merrimack for some time, which is using data to inform instruction. This is just more data in order to do that. Likewise, in math, Claim Three, communicating reasoning, the target would be state logical assumptions that are being used. So, you have to be able to say the thing you think you mean in order to come up with the conclusion that you've come up with. And by the way, that would be the following standards. So, that's what's reported to teachers. Just want to make the point that when parents got their reports, it had levels and claims only. Teachers get targets. So, this is just a further refinement of what, so you have, under ELA, you have the claims, then you have the targets within those claims, and then you have the standards supporting the targets. It's important to know that the reporting is four levels, as it is now in kneecap, and those are levels one, two, three, and four. I draw your attention to what the definition of all of them are. So, Level One is minimal understanding, partial understanding, adequate, and thorough understanding. And this relates to the knowledge and skills needed for success in college and careers as specified in the Common Core State Standards. So, when, so I'll just go back to this for a minute. So, when a parent gets a score report, it talks about a one through four levels, and it's important that people understand that Level One is minimal understanding, and that's defined as they really can't do much with what they know and what they know isn't that much, if I could use a colloquial way to say it. Whereas a thorough understanding is a student has a lot of appropriate content and can apply that content in ways that demonstrate his or her understanding, through tasks that they're asked to do, through smarter balanced assessments, through answers that are given and the reasoning behind those and the questions organized to help students demonstrate those answers. This might be a little bit more information than anybody needs, but I thought since this is the first time, I'd just share it with you. So, there's a scaled score, and the scaled score in smarter balance is a continuous score from 2,000 to 3,000 that increases across the grades. And here's an example of how that looks. So, if you're in grade three at Level Four, you'd have a scaled score of between 2,490 and 2,623. And if you go across, you'd see that by the time you get to high school, the scaled score range increases. Math likewise. On parent reports, the claims are reported as well. So, parents receive two pieces of information. What level in ELA and math did their student achieve? And were they below standard, at or near standard, or above standard on the claims? So, there's Claim One, Claim Two, Claim Three, and there's a reporting of the level at which a student performed as well. So, remember, a claim is a little bit more information, and now I understand for this claim, my student is at or near standard. The educator would know by having access to the targets, the reason that a student is at or near standard and not above standard. So, that's a level of information that the educators get. But to simplify reporting, the claims are reported for parents and students. So, this is an example, and those of you who have children, who, students who have taken the assessment might recognize this. So, this is just an example of a score report that a student might get. So, the level would be a Level Three. If you see where it says 2,512 plus or minus 24, what that means is, is that the assessment is an assessment that is based on a student's ability to answer questions, you know, right and wrong. And if a student answers questions consistently correctly, then the difficulty level increases. And if a student answers questions, let's say, a question incorrectly, then the difficulty level drops a little bit until a student is able to consistently answer correctly, and then it moves on. So, it's attempting to, it's very individualized. So, the plus or minus 24 is an attempt to say, after a student, if the student were to take this test, you know, multiple times, the likelihood of their getting that score would be plus or minus twenty, you know, 24. So, that's just, that's the range that's built into the system based on the way that the test operates with students being able to have questions that are graduated based on how they're responding. So, you could be, so anyway, so then you have the claim, and you see here that for this student who scored a 2,512, the, are four claims, and you see that they were at or near standard, which is designated by a dash on three of those, reading. And then it gives a little bit of example of what that means. And then for research and inquiry, there's a check mark, they're above standard, and it says that based on the way they've answered consistently, a student can engage in research and activity to investigate topics and to analyze, integrate, and present information that's above standard. So, there's an attempt to provide more information for students and parents to be able to understand, how is it that I achieved this score? What did I do? What do I need to do? And then the teachers have the added benefit of the target information that allows them to be able to define it even more succinctly. So, there's just more about the score range. Just an example, if people are comparing, you could have two students who have a same score but a different level, and you, I think you see. You could have Student A who has eight points on concepts and procedures, one point for problem-solving, one point on communicating reasoning, for a total of 10 points, and another student could also have 10 points, but they get their points in different ways. So, it's very helpful to be able to understand more distinctly how individual students are performing, drilling down to the claims rather than to just say broadly, they're all doing okay with Claim One, because that isn't actually as true as it might, it was never that true, but we didn't report that level of detail. And so, I would just, and before I talk about our scores in Merrimack, I would just say to you that we always, always have a habit and a practice in Merrimack of constantly assessing and reflecting on our curriculum and instructional practices. And we use multiple data points. So, it was never only kneecap. It will never only be smarter balance. I think Merrimack is fortunate in the number of data points that we use to be able to draw a picture for students and teachers and parents about how our students are performing, and we continually add to those data points and assessments over time. So, I've just passed out to you the, given that context, I've passed out to you the Merrimack School District results. They're on back-to-back pages, ELA and literacy and math. So, I always have had a habit of reporting to, a practice of reporting to the board Merrimack's performance and versus the state. It's just a point of comparison, and so I've done that here. So, if you look at the ELA literacy results, I have combined percent at Level Three or above for all the reporting. So, for instance, ELA literacy at grade three, 58% of our students are demonstrated performance that was at Level Three or above. The state at 55. Grade Four in the entire results, grades three to 11 for ELA and math, is the only one where we're below the state average. Grade Four, 48% of our students were at Level Three or above, and at the state level it was 56%. Grade Five were even at 63% of students at Level Three or above. Grade Six, 63% of our students were at Level Three or above and 57% at the state level. Grade Seven, 65% of our students performed at Level Three or above, 62 at the state. Grade Eight, 63% of students performed at Level Three or above and 58% of students at the state. And at grade 11, 75% of our students performed at Level Three or above and 59% of students at the state performed at Level Three or above. So, I just want to say again that the results here are based on a far more complicated assessment tool than our students have been exposed to before. I was at all the schools during their testing window last spring, and I saw firsthand what students were asked to do. I think any principal would tell you, it was as complex a task as they've ever been asked to do before. I'll take an opportunity again to say that our team, from the technology staff to all our educators and administrators, more than met the challenge of being prepared to administer this. And this represents the baseline. I can't extrapolate too much for you. I always talk to the board in terms of trends when we've talked about kneecap results. I've been more happy to talk to you about findings that have been consistent over a period of time. This is our first year. So, next year, I'm happy to report our results then, and we can maybe begin to see a trend line, but probably not something we could hang our hat on. line, but probably not something we could hang our hat on until the third year. But in any event, these are our results and they are what they are. We are quite content with many of them. We always however, point out two things. We can always do better. We always try to do better and we always search for ways to do better. And this is one data point. It's a significant one, but it's one. So if you turn the page and I think I will just pop over here. I'm sorry. This is like not built for me. So the math, the math results, I'll just similarly report to you. Grade three, 57% of our grade three students performed at level three or above and 53 at the state. At grade four, 57% of our students, three or above, 49% at the state. In grade five, 48% of our students at three or above and 44% at the state. Grade six, 53% at level three or above and 45% at the state. Grade seven, we're even at 51% both in the district and the state, performing at level three or above. Grade eight, 49% of students at level three or above and 44% at the state. And at grade 11, 38% of students performed at level three or above and 36% at the state. This is one area where I do see a parallel, if not a correlation, a parallel. Student performance in kneecap and in smarter balance, at least as relates to this one year, consistently decreases as students get older. That is a finding that's been true for kneecap. It is reflected here. It's a phenomenon that's true in Meramec and as you can see, it's a phenomenon that's reflected in the state. That's not an excuse, it's not a defense, it's just a fact. And we have been and continue to be mindful of that decrease going up in the grades. And I'm happy now we're at another point to talk to you about what we're doing about that and have done about, or attempting to do about that. But in any event, that's a point I'd like to point out because it reflects something similar to kneecap results. So, and again, I would just point out that this as well represents a, a demand on students to perform tasks that are at a level of complexity that they've never had to perform at before. And so I'm, I think we're all pleased about that as a district with our administrators, department heads and so on, because it's challenging students to, to really meet, meet the challenge of their content and to be able to demonstrate on multiple levels that they understand. And if they can't and where they don't, it's data for us to be able to respond to through our curriculum reviews, our program reviews, and, and that's what we've done. So I'm sure that you have many questions and I'm just happy to entertain them.
Vice Chair Barnes.
I'm writing down a note based on your, well, your last statements as well, but I wanted to kind of start out from the beginning. My first note was regarding, I paralleled it again to cars, is they always say, don't buy a car that was made on a Friday because it, you know, basically they say the cars during certain days of the week when they're made are usually more reliable than others. So when you look at these students and you did have to put them in, obviously schedule them different days of the week, different times of the day, has any of that data been able to be extrapolated or could you look at parallels, fourth graders that were tested in the morning versus the afternoon, Fridays versus Mondays, Wednesdays, et cetera, to say, you know, is there a sweet spot for performance in testing? So is there an ability to be able to glean such data?
So the, the answer, the short answer is we have not done that. The, at the elementary schools in particular, the schedules were very stable in that they, they were always testing in the morning, for instance. And so there is an apples-to-apples comparison there. More interesting is like where in a testing window they tested. So if we tried to keep that consistent within our district so that Thornton's Ferry, fourth graders weren't testing at the beginning of the testing window and Reed's Ferry was, was testing at the end of the testing window because there would be more instruction for people being tested at the end of the testing window. So we, we accounted for that by making sure that, you know, all the grades, for the most part, tested at the same time within the testing window. To be able to tell you whether we saw that Tuesdays were better than Wednesdays, that wouldn't be necessarily reflected in the results we get, it would be more anecdotal in terms of students' preparation as, as they demonstrated and so on. What I can tell you is that the, all the principals and the test coordinators at each site would report that on every day, the students came in enthused, excited, eager. There didn't appear, appear to be a fluctuation in their, in their mood or their engagement based on, you know, tiring throughout the course of time. And it didn't take that many days. It didn't stretch on. The testing windows lasted a long time, but the testing within the schools were just a matter of days. So that's the best I can tell you right now as relates to your question.
And then my next question is, we were comparing our scores against the state of New Hampshire, but I really feel that we have a lot of, I think, connection demographically as well with the South Central region. Are we able to analyze our scores against, say, our region of the state? So we're not coming up against maybe a Colebrook or a Berlin or a, you know, that we're really looking at people who'd have the same kind of demographic profile as far as delivering a comparable, you know, education?
Mm-hmm. So at the moment, no.
And then the, one of your last comments, which is why I was seriously taking notes, was you said that they have never been tested at this level of complexity prior to now. I'm assuming you're talking standardized testing only.
Standardized testing, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Because I'm like, no, I'm sure they have.
Right. I mean, first, thank you for catching that right. Absolutely, I mean that, because I, we've, we have worked hard in Meramec to develop formative assessments over years and, and arrange a battery of assessments that teachers have worked hard on. So I was referring to standardized assessments. So kneecap never tested with this level of complexity before. Thank you for clarifying that.
No problems. Jake could probably tell you stories, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you for that.
Excellent. Those are my questions so far.
Thank you.
Mr. Schneider. He's deferring to Ms. Welhume.
I had a similar thought to Shannon, which is, you know, I wondered if, let's say, you know, comparable communities, maybe not necessarily the whole south, southern region, but certainly communities that might be more comparable to Meramec. You know, we're discussing our results publicly here. I'm wondering if those results for a couple of maybe neighboring communities might also be publicly available to be able to see what we compare there. But I certainly get your point that this is one, you know, data point, this is one area of comparison. So it's, it's not everything all in this. So that, that would be a question. I'd be really interested in seeing where we, where we compare with comparable districts, I guess. I'd like to see that if we can get it.
So that, to my knowledge, that, that information is not readily available now. So for instance, it's not like there's a place that you can go to on the state website, for instance, and pull down Bedford or, or Goffstown or something. Anecdotally, you know, in meetings with my counterparts, we, you know, could share and so on. But if you're asking, is there a place to pull that down, the answer is no at the moment. The, so, but it's, certainly it's an important thing. I just do want to, at the risk of, of saying this too many times, you know, we talk a lot in the district with our leadership team about data and assessments. And, you know, there are some who say, oh my goodness, all you do is assess. And, and, you know, I, I think I've, I don't know if I've shared it with the board before, but, but I think it's fair to just say now, since we're talking about, about this, that that's an unusual complaint to have in a way, if you think in terms of doctors, you know, when you go to a doctor, you don't tell them that you have a flu or you're just not feeling well and then they will just listen to what you're telling them and then prescribe you medication as a result of what you self-report. They're going to want to take tests and if you have high blood pressure, they're going to want to take tests periodically to see whether the medication is working. So is the intervention I'm giving you working and is that reflected by your lowering blood pressure? So we're going to continue to assess. Now you could say that's too often, but on the other hand, you want real data so that you can see whether what you're doing is working. So I would, I would just ask the community, those who are wondering about this, to, to realize that we use our assessments for the same reason. We take that data in, we're trying to see a result based on that and then do something based on that result and then test again to see if the thing we did worked. So it's not testing for testing sake and it's not suspending good instruction while we're testing because good instruction is its own kind of testing and the results of that are used meaningfully. So I stress again, that this is one assessment and it's an important one. But we do, and I am proud to say, we do multiple kinds of assessments throughout the levels to be able to see whether was this an outlier or do we see a pattern here? And if we see a pattern, we're duty bound to do something with the pattern that we see developing. Even if it's showing continued strength, then we say, well, then we've got to extend that student, you've got to push them a little bit beyond where they are evidently because they're doing what we need them to do. And likewise, if we need to intervene, remediate, we're trying to find data to point out, what do we remediate? We're just not going to start, you know, keep reteaching you the thing that we taught you before that definitely didn't work. We're going to try to figure out what is that thing and drill down to that. And we're finding, at least initially, that these results allow us to do that more than we've been able to do before.
And then my next question is regarding parents. So since the reports went home from school, can you tell me a little bit if, you know, you receive parent feedback or if you've had any, any kind of inquiries regarding understanding the reports or anything like that, any type of parent inquiry? What, what have you been receiving?
So at central office, I have received none. I have spoken to the leadership team of the principals and have asked, and they report minimal questions or inquiries. Most of them that came, because the reports, most of them, of the ones that there were, most of them were resolved at parent conference period because these results went out kind of contemporaneous with some of that. So some of that was able to be answered either at the classroom level or at the building level. But there's been no report of excessive, excessive anything, I don't mean excessive, I just, not too many people seeming to inquire or.
Okay, thanks.
No.
Mr. Schneider.
So a couple of things. First, sort of a comment versus a question. When we've looked at kneecaps in the past, we've talked about sort of cohorts of a grade as we follow them through our system. And if they're, you get a class that might be brighter or higher achievers, you'll find higher scores that bubble through and lower, you know, and, and the opposite. I'm assuming that some of these high and low bumps that you see, you won't know if they're problematic for the grade or just the cohort until you get at least two to three years under your belt to sort of watch the flow.
That's correct.
Right. Okay. Two, two specific questions I had was, I know there was a lot of angst that parents and stuff had about taking the results of the kneecap, of the results of the smarter balance and somehow measuring the district against it. Either, you know, as far as state compliance, I mean, I know there's no, no child left behind, I know that's all been sort of evolved to do a new process. But at this point, as far as you know, is the state doing anything in terms of saying, you know, you, Meramec have scored really, really bad in this area, therefore we're going to take some action? Or is this more just feeling through informational, to kind of see how things go for a while?
The latter.
The latter. Do you, do you know of any intent over time to do anything? Is there any discussions?
The, the only thing that I'm aware of relates to schools receiving Title I funding and, and that what would be done, what would be done in cases of underperforming schools, I think is not entirely clear at the moment. We do not fall into that category with our results. But that would be the, that's the only consequence that I am aware of at the moment.
Okay. And my last question, there's been a lot of discussion that's been in the press and you've heard of, I've heard it anecdotally from other districts, that there, there, when you get into high school grades, there's the opportunity to do multiple ways of testing this. And I've heard, and I don't know whether it's accurate or not, that the state has decided that 11th grade testing, instead of being smarter balance, is going to be SAT-based. Is there anything that you or the superintendent could share about where Meramec stands in terms of 11th grade testing?
So you have forecasted a January conversation, so I'll, and, and, and so the answer is, that is true. You know, what's, what's challenging at the moment, and it's not, you know, a good or bad thing, it's just, what's challenging is that there's a lot changing. And, and, you know, decision makers make decisions and, you know, those of us in the field are kind of left to deal with the challenges that are presented by changing paradigms all the time. So that is a true thing. And I have got a lot more to say to the board in January just about that. But if, if you're wondering, the answer is yes, it is moving to 11th grade and that's a requirement of the state.
All set. Mr. Marcus.
So mine was the class that took the smarter balance exams and we were collectively less enchanted by the test than you seem to be. And I had a couple of questions about the test in general that I hope you could explain the reasoning of the administrators to dispel those notions, I guess. And I wanted to start by saying that I agree with you completely as far as the use in breaking down the test into the smaller targets and claims, because I do think that that's very helpful. But as far as the test itself is concerned, I'd like to begin by telling the board the cost of the test in high school was, as you mentioned, the time of day. And then you also mentioned, you don't need to sacrifice good instruction for good testing, but we missed eight block periods of English at the end of the year because it was done in English, because that's the one class that every student takes. And that was, fortunately, my teacher used Google Docs, so while we were in the computer labs done with the testing, we could still conference with her in silence. But for students that didn't have Mrs. Gott, we missed, I think it was 12 hours of instruction? I may have that, it might have been nine, but I feel like it was 12 hours of instruction for English. But then to kind of go through bit by bit on this test, and I hope I don't sound accusatory or anything, it's just, a lot of students have questions about this and I am one of them. So to start with, in the reading claims, one of them is the writing. And I was wondering if, for part of the test, we had to write an essay. Mine was in-site sources that they gave us. And mine was about whether spoke, like beat poetry and rap were considered music or not. And I was wondering how the writing was graded, because did people go through and do each writing or was it, as most people assume, graded by a computer, reading through our responses? Are you aware of that?
Yep. I, to my knowledge, it was a combination of both.
All right. So do you think that relying on the computer to grade it even in part, do you think that that adequately captures the nuance of writing? Which is, as you said, talking about the different vernacular when you're speaking to different people, do you think it can capture all the complexities of writing? Or does it stop at picking up keywords that it's programmed to pick up?
So I'm not, I'm not in a position, Jake, to, to say what I feel about that. You know, the test is what the test is, of course. If you could have individuals score every, every item personally like a teacher does, that would certainly be an advantage. I'm not going to pretend that it isn't. And I'm not, you know, defending the, the test or the administration, the grading one way or the other. I'm just saying that it's not feasible to do that. And so in a standardized setting, I think the attempt was to try to have a combination of both. And it's not just, to my, to my knowledge, it's not just searching for keywords. That might be what, you know, students are thinking is the case, but it's, that's not the case. But if you're asking for the level of detail about how that's done, I, I don't have it, I don't think. don't think anybody has it. But that's the disadvantage of a standardized test, which is why I said that we have always, whether it's kneecap or Smarter Balance, have always tried to take our results with what we might call a grain of salt. And say it's important, but we don't change mightily one way or the other as a result. It's informative, and we compare that to other things that we know about students through those other assessments.
All right. I was only asking, not because, I was, trying to think how to phrase this. I wasn't asking you if you knew exactly how it was, exactly how the writing was graded. It's just much of, it seemed to me through your presentation that much of the importance of this test as compared to others is that it's capable of assessing students on all of these things, which is, with a perfect test, that would be a huge advantage. I was just commenting on and asking the question as to whether, or not as to whether, but the fact that this isn't the perfect test, and if you think that it provides all of the great advantages. Did that make sense? I'm not sure if it did.
Well, I mean, I appreciate your question, and I'm going to answer you, and if I don't, you just tell me, and I'll, I'll try again. Do I think it's a perfect test? No. You, you mentioned my use of the term enchanted. I, I don't know if I, you know, I'm not sure that I'm enchanted with the test. What I am grateful for is that it is an attempt to do more than previous standardized assessments have attempted to do, which is to try to combine, try not to use, you know, like, sort of multiple modalities, right? So, so I'm, I'm, rather than just, you know, answering a question, or doing a standard, you know, prompt, I am attempting to integrate all kinds of knowledge and skills that I've learned, and try to demonstrate that through, you know, tasks and so on. So I think that's an improvement over our previous way of testing. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. Do I think it's an improvement? Yes, I do. But I'm, that's, if you're asking me, that's what I would tell you.
All right. And then the one other issue that I wanted to bring up that I personally had with the test was, in the math section with the modeling and the data analysis, I was, you could tell that it was the first run of the test, I guess, and I was wondering if you knew at all what means we're going into improving the test, if it will continue, which I hope that it does. But do you know what is going into trying, what's going into improving it to make it more accurate in assessing these things? Because as it stood, our modeling was, we spent a class period in English learning about zip lines, and like, they had the rope and everything to demonstrate what Slack was.
You're talking about the performance task?
Yes.
Yep.
And then it was, the entire test was use of the Pythagorean theorem, and showing how high does this zip line have to be so that Susie doesn't hit her legs on the ground when she's going down it? So do you know if any effort is going into improving those to make them more encapsulating of every, not everything, obviously, but more of what we learn in math than one equation? Because I felt that that was where it fell, fell short. I liked the concept of the performance task, but then having our English teachers teach us about Slack from a script, and then testing us on one equation, I seen, I felt that that seemed like a misguided attempt at an assessment.
So what I know, you know, again, I don't, you know, I don't, I'm not a Smarter Balance test creator, so I don't, I don't know. I only know what I understand, and what I understand is that during and after the assessment, there were sort of live phone banks, taking feedback from the test coordinators. This isn't going well. This is, this is, this is not working. This is working really, really well. And then afterwards, I think the DOE consolidated some feedback about those kinds of things from test administrators, principals, and so on, with the idea that this, because as you point out, this is the first run, that there was going to be an effort to perfect every part of it. And so I, I don't have, I'm not privy to knowledge about what they're going to do or how they're going to do it. But I am aware that there is an effort to take feedback and...
The test is designed to improve year after year?
Correct.
As it becomes, as we get more experience with it?
Correct.
All right.
Correct. That is definitely the, the way that health process has been described to me.
And last but not least, is, I don't know if this would be a question for you, or if this is entirely up to Mr. Johnson, but as I mentioned, it was conducted entirely during English classes, which I felt was detrimental to the end of our junior year English curriculum. Do you know if there's any thought going into other ways to schedule it, such that one class doesn't suffer so heavily, and because of such a time-consuming exam?
So I'm grateful to the English department, you know, for, for helping to work out the schedule the way that they did. I think that that's a discussion that Mr. Johnson will have with his team from year to year. You know, it takes a period of time. And, and yet, and I don't at all mean to diminish the time away from instruction, however, what it does attempt to do in place of that is to provide, you know, some valuable data about student performance. And so there's a trade-off, and there will always be a trade-off. So whether it's English, and maybe next year it would be math, or maybe it would be science, or maybe there'd be a way when the administration, you know, gets more facile with doing this to be able to, you know, combine block, you know, not combine blocks, but to, to mix it up a little bit within a day, to take from a few different blocks. You know, at the end of the day, it's, it's going to be time away, and that's, that's it. So the, the complexity of taking, you know, the high school and doing this with all the technology, you know, needs that need to be put in place, this was the best way to do it for this year. So I'm sure that Mr. Johnson and his team are going to be thinking of ways to continue to, you know, perfect that. But, you know, I can't pretend that there won't be an impact, because there always will be. It's just how that impact is, is played out over the, the course of a day, I'm sure there can be ways to address that.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. Sure.
And as you said, in January, you'll be sharing changes that are potentially coming to the high school as well.
Right, right.
Superintendent.
The one thing I wanted to answer, and not stealing any thunder from Mark when he speaks with you in January, is the fact that we already know that the assessment that's going to be given, which is the SAT, is going to be given on a given day in March. And so it'll be a one-time offering, all junior classes across the state that will take this. And so it'll be a much more limited time than what Smarter Balanced was. It will also be pencil and paper, not on the computer, and not with performance tasks and so on. It's just entirely different. So it was, yep.
You're absolutely right. I'm, I'm answering as if it was going to continue.
Exactly. So I think it's just important, where Jake is raising up for refinement into, into the future. It's not like we can take Smarter Balance at the junior level and make it better, because that was then, and this is now. And so the SAT is a set day in a set frame of time, let's say three, three hours or four hours. That's it, done in a day. And so very specific and very different than this one.
Dr. McLaughlin, I, I had one question. When you mentioned that the teachers receive, in addition to the claims results, they actually also receive the targets, that that helps to more fully inform where the student is at, and how to tailor instruction for, for that student, right? No different than any other formative assessment that we do within the district. I'm just curious if you know what the rationale was for not providing that level of detail to parents? Because I would think that that would be more fully informative to them as well.
So I'm not really privy to that decision. I'm really not. I can't speak to it. I can only speculate. So I would speculate...
I won't ask you to do that.
Okay.
I won't ask you to do that. And I would just say that I, I thank you for sharing the presentation, which I think breaks down what the Smarter Balanced assessment is hoping to measure, how it's attempting to measure it. You explained the concepts extremely well, and I appreciate the, the first data points. I, I think it's also fair to say that what you shared is absolutely true. I appreciate Mr. Marcus's firsthand experience using the instrument and giving his firsthand testimonial as to some of the challenge, challenges. We also recognize that the kneecap assessment had similar challenges in terms of what it was actually capturing and, and how well it was capturing that. And we've always taken those results as a data point, but not the definitive result for how we're performing. And I view this much the same way. It will be interesting to see more history in order to determine how, you know, either the instrument, the test is improving, as well as our performance. But I, I think that, much like kneecap, it will be one of many data points that we take into consideration as we look at what we're doing with curriculum and how we're delivering instruction. So, thank you. A very informative presentation, and I appreciate your working through all the technical difficulties in order to deliver it, and, and I appreciate it again.
I'm sure you're just sorry I didn't get to deliver it at 11 o'clock at night this time.
So that will take us now to item number eight, third review of new policy, animals in school. Superintendent Chaffrey.
Thank you. So first, I'm going to ask, that you have in front of you the addition that says revised 12-18-15, which should have been put at your place. Just after we passed out the policy in the packet, we went back and did another revision. I want you to know too, I, I told you before, that all the leaders on the leadership team wanted to have a more thorough look at this policy, and they have all weighed in. I specifically will say that I, I thank Mark, Matt, and Nick Kohler for doing some additional work. When I left you last time, one additional change had been made on the proposed policy, and that was by Vice Chair Barnes. And she asked in item number 10, that it, that it should say, people shall wash their hands after contact with animals as compared to should. So that change was made at that time. And you'll see in front of you now that we have in red what was changed or, or added to. And that is, we went a step further in talking to Linda Kelly specifically, the trainer or the overseer of Ruby the Dog that is going to be coming into Reed's very school. And in talking to her, what we realized is that we couldn't have one specific certification, because really, there are a number of different programs that dogs specifically go through, but other animals as well. And so the more important consideration is that the animal has gone through some kind of therapy certification, and that it includes instruction, and then there is testing, that they go back and are tested after a period of time. And most importantly, and I think this is where Matt was going, is that we have evidence of liability insurance. So those were the most important elements, and that's what we heard over and over again. The other thing is the notification of staff, that it went way beyond just the, the parents of children being serviced, but that we made a real effort to let all staff members in a given building know it. And definitely, as we talked and processed this, the administration really wanted to just leave special considerations. It didn't want to get into specificity. It said, given the animal, where it was going to be, how it was going to be handled, they would prefer taking care of notification. And then when, when people came to them, be it parents or staff, that they would make consider, special considerations, given the givens. This is one of the policies that I would have to say, almost, we seek your permission to implement it at a future board meeting, or approval of it, with the idea we implement it and see how it goes. And then if we need modification, we come back and make the change, or ask you for that. Because really, we have more limited, if you will, animal exposures than not. And so I think in this particular case, we'd just like to get it underway and see how it goes, and have an experience factor. I can just tell you that the leadership team, the 19, feel as though putting this before you at this time is a policy, you know, ready to be played out, if you would agree with that.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Mr. Schneider.
I like the changes that were made, especially for the animal therapy certification, so I, I don't have any issues with the policy the way it's written.
Okay. Any others? No? So seeing none, we'll put the item on consent for the next meeting. And we will then, and thank you, Superintendent, and we will move to item number nine, dissemination of proposed New Hampshire School Board Association resolutions. In your packet, you will see that what was included were the proposed resolutions for the New Hampshire School Boards Association meeting that is coming up for a vote at the delegate assembly on January 16th of 2016. We will be represented by our liaison and executive committee member, Vice Chair Barnes, at that meeting. And additionally, what was included were some revisions and amendments to existing resolutions that specifically referenced No Child Left Behind, that were provided by Vice Chair Barnes as a result of the recent passage of the Every Student Succeeds Act, which was the revision for No Child Left Behind that was recently enacted. At our next meeting, I will look to the board to essentially take positions on these resolutions so that our delegate to the assembly can appropriately vote them through. I don't know, Vice Chair Barnes, if there's something you'd like to add?
I would. Other than the, at your desk, at your places tonight, you have the ESSA language changes, Every Student Succeeds Act, you'll hear ESSA quite a bit. That being said, I also thought that a nice overview of what ESSA is might be valuable. So I got from the New Hampshire School Boards Association website, the National School Boards Association, basically, quick packets, a six-page document regarding what you need to know about ESSA as a school board body, obviously. It's very new, it's going to have changing parts, but what we need to know now, and what to expect in dates and timelines. So there's a lot of insightful information here as well, as we look at ESSA as the new standard going forward. So I recommend everyone read that.
Thank you. And that will take us now to item number 10, other correspondence. Vice Chair Barnes.
After our last meeting, I got an email from a constituent adding that maybe we want to add something standard to our agenda called noteworthy news, to talk about some of the positive things that are happening throughout our district, just basically between meetings. So we're always really talking about what we're doing, and, and kind of just keeping a proactive communication going. On the second note, I got from another constituent that expect to see in January the possibility of a petition requesting police dogs be used to search the high school for drugs. That being said, again, about communication, do we have the opportunity as a district, maybe at a future board meeting? I know it's... maybe at a future board meeting, I know it's budget season and I'm cognizant of our heavy schedules, that maybe we talk more, not so much about what Safeguard is doing, because that's always a standing committee and district-wide, but really, what the district looks at as the situation with drugs in our school district, and basically the strategy that we take as a district to limit what drugs can come in the district and what happens when it's recognized that maybe they have breached our school doors, our school property. So, really talking about, I think a lot of, everything I've heard over probably the last five years is, what are we doing about the drug problem at Merrimack High School? I don't think we're unique. I'll be very clear about that. I think that any questions or concerns about the use of illegal drugs is recognized by this district, but maybe there's just not enough understanding of what's being done day-to-day to really address what is a day-to-day issue. So I think that we always have the opportunity to communicate better, and this board is obviously a great conduit to the community to do that. So, if there's an opportunity at a future board meeting, so it's correspondence that leads to the request for new business.
Okay.
And to comment, I think it's a good idea.
I'll note the agenda item, and we can consider it. Ms. Gualyumi?
I also received an email regarding the drug-sniffing dogs in the school. And to Shannon's point, I guess I also wanted to add, a couple weeks ago, I had gone to a community meeting in Bedford. It was a meeting that was hosted by the superintendentship, what's this one? McGee, and the police chief. And it was just an open, quite actually a pretty large turnout. I would say a couple hundred people went to it, and there were some, it was basically a coming together to address the problem as a community. There were some testimonies from people that had been affected, that it's not, it's bigger than big, and it's just not something that people can say, doesn't happen to me, doesn't happen to my kid, some things like that. So, I think that it makes sense to dig in and see what more we could be doing as a district, what we should be doing, what we shouldn't be doing. Because I do think it's a pretty prevalent, from anything I see in the news locally in New Hampshire, there's not a day that goes by that I don't read about young children somewhere in the state being affected. So, I think it's something that we do need to dig further into.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schneider?
So, first comment, there actually was a heroin forum that was held in Merrimack. When was it, in September?
It was in the summer.
Late summer, that occurred. So, they did touch on it, but I agree, in Safeguard, we do talk about that, involving more. So, I think it's something joint between Safeguard and the district on how we carry it forward, that'd be good.
And maybe the police.
Well, the police are part of Safeguard, so I'd, Safeguard includes a very wide swath of membership, so I speak just generally about Safeguard's involvement.
And prior to the heroin one, the police also were a part of a Safeguard presentation on recognizing the symptoms of various drugs and drug use. You and I both went to that, yeah.
Yep. But as far as correspondence, to sort of get back on the agenda topic, we wandered around a little bit, but...
Appreciate you keeping me honest.
Thread drift, we call it on most files.
Sorry.
I wanted to just share, it isn't direct correspondence to me, but today, from a social media perspective, since I was sort of half on vacation watching the social media, there was a lot of angst about, from parents and others, that there was no proactive communication from the district around, everything was okay. Now, I mean, one could discuss whether by putting something out saying everything was okay, it was sort of, you know, repeating or whatever. But I think, given a lot of the angst with a lot of what's gone on, it might be appropriate for us as a board, in the future, to just talk about a method of communication. Now, some districts have the ability to put notifications out either through the police webpage or something like that. I would not necessarily want to reverse 411, going out saying everything's okay, because people, their phone rings and they immediately think it's not okay, right? So, I think it'd be interesting as a board to just talk about ways that we can get communication out that are, you know, don't worry kind of informational things versus more of the other stuff. So, it was just an observation I had today, watching the input.
Superintendent, before you comment, so, at our last meeting, this actually blends into what was discussed at our last meeting. And I think that what would be helpful, and I think Ms. Gualyumi had volunteered previously to spearhead this, it would be helpful to look at a communication committee, as it were, to come up with a communication plan. There are all types of communications within the district, different audiences, different types of messaging, and look at the ways that we think that things perhaps can be done, should be done, et cetera. But the development of a communication plan is something that should be done thoughtfully as opposed to us simply saying we should get out there on Facebook, right? So, I would welcome that, and I think we ought to be looking at that. And now I'll turn to the Superintendent.
And I think I made a conscious decision to say nothing, given that I had an extensive conversation with Chief Doyle when I first arrived. And we conferred, and the thought was, we would stay the course and try and have a day as normal as possible, with the idea that we are blessed to have two student resource officers, both at the middle school and the high school, who obviously were probably on a higher alert than not. Throughout the day, I conferred with him two more times, as a matter of fact. And so, it's a decision that you don't make lightly, and it is one probably that you're damned if you do and damned if you don't. So, we were very fortunate to have gotten through the day to the best of our ability. And later in the day, I, both in the morning and the afternoon, I was in communication with the Nashua administration too, because I wanted to know what they were going to do tomorrow, and it was their determination that they are going to be in session. So, I was in communication with both Nashua and Chief Doyle. So, just so you know, the day was one of continual communication.
Thank you. Any other correspondence come before the board? Superintendent?
I'm going to play to Vice Chair Barnes and play to noteworthy news. And that is to tell you that the Advanced Placement District Honor Roll has come out, the sixth one. There are 425 school districts recognized in the United States and Canada. Merrimack is one of three high schools in the state of New Hampshire. We currently offer 16 Advanced Placement courses. I can remember the day when we were talking about five or six. And the reason we get on the honor roll is because we've increased participation or access to AP courses, and we also have improved performance levels. If you score a three, four, or five, then you get credit for that Advanced Placement course. So, I'm very proud of the students at Merrimack High School and the fact that they are into rigorous study, and I think that bodes well for us.
And this is the third time in four years we've received that honor roll distinction, which is noteworthy news indeed. I have two pieces of correspondence. I received an email this past week from a resident stating some observations about the school budget, to which I responded. And I have a parent from the high school who has been communicating about his son's situation at the high school, and I am trading emails and plan to have a phone conversation in the next couple of days. And that will take us to comments, although I think we've commented quite a bit. Mr. Marcus?
I just wanted to comment on Ms. Chaffrey's point, that the students are equally, forgot what verb I was gonna use. The students are equally happy with administration, because we are distinctly aware of the fact that we have the privilege to choose between 18, or 16, Advanced Placement courses, which is not something offered at every public high school in the country. So, on behalf of students who do take AP classes, I wanted to say thank you to the board and to the Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. We don't get thanked often, so. Item number 11, new business. Superintendent?
So just in preparation for January 4th, where there will be some holiday time, for that particular agenda, there will be two more budgets that will come before you. The first is Technology, Library, Media, and the second will be Special Education. If at all possible for you to provide questions, which I do think are beneficial, if you can work that out in your schedule, if you could have those to me by December 29th or 30th, that's a week from Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday, so we'll be getting the packet out, that would be very helpful. I will then tell you that on the 7th of January, later that same week, it would be all other budgets I have scheduled for that evening, meaning Master Cola Elementary, Reed's Ferry Elementary, Thornton's Ferry Elementary, the Upper Elementary, and Merrimack High School for that evening. On the 12th, the following week, I have put the district budget, and the middle school budget, the district budget, and possible warrant articles, to spread it out just a bit. And so I would ask you, with those budgets all in mind, I will seek the board's guidance, probably at least by the 7th, to find out how you're leaning, so that if you want the administration to do some modification, I just want a little bit of time for that, because it will be on the 18th of January that you finalize the budget. So it goes 4th, 7th, 12th, 18th, and it literally gets handed off to the Budget Committee on the 19th.
Thank you. Mr. Marcus?
I remember about a week ago, we received an email about this room not being available, and I think it was the 7th, maybe it was the 12th. Has it been worked out where we are going to be, just so that I know where to be?
Very good, very good memory, and I would guide you before the 7th. But, tonight I will tell you, we're going to be at Master Cola Elementary School's all-purpose room. And we won't have a live feed, but we'll have it recorded. So, I will queue you up as it gets closer.
No scream. That takes us to item number 12, committee reports. Mr. Schneider?
The Planning Building Committee was scheduled to meet on December 14th. They did not achieve quorum, so the meeting did not occur.
Ms. Gualyumi?
And Parks and Rec did not meet, is not meeting during the month of December, so I don't have an update there.
Little break. Any other committee reports?
I have one.
Okay.
Budget Committee met on December 8th. The only business that was transacted was the rig organization. Stan Heinrich was re-elected as the chair, and Bill Cummings was elected as the vice chair.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Vice Chair Barnes?
Davis, is there still an opening for a position that was resigned?
Oh, yes. Thank you for reminding me. There is still an opening, and there was not, or there were not, pardon me, there were not any applications received, excuse me. And it was decided by consensus that we move forward less one member, because at this point, it would be too late to get anyone up to speed on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Good update. Any more committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 13, public comments on agenda items. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. We will take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to enter non-public session per RSA 91 hyphen A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, subsections A, B, and C.
Salute.
Which is, it was made by Vice Chair Barnes, which you could not see, seconded by Mr. Powell, who displayed contemporaneously participating in the meeting. So, the motion is on the table, we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Gualyumi, how do you vote?
In favor.
Mr. Schneider?
In favor.
Vice Chair Barnes?
In favor.
Mr. Powell?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor, so that carries 5-0-0. And I thank everyone, and good night.